Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to the August 1st, 2019 Forsyth County Board of Commissioners Regular Meeting and Public Hearings. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order at 5:01 PM. I don't know that we have a speaker here or anyone here to lead us in the invocation, so I would like to ask Commissioner Brown to do that if he does not mind.
I'd be happy to. Please stand as you're able. Bow your heads. Gracious heavenly Father, we come before you tonight to work hard, to hear the people, and to do everything that would be pleasing to your side and to them. Lord, there are many issues that we have to take up tonight. Some of those contentious help us to make the best judgments, all to your providential glory, we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I know. He's been here. We'll get him back. Yep. We're going to move on to our agenda here, and I'm going to poll the commissioners, see if there are any changes. Commissioner Levent, do you have any changes to the agenda this evening?
No, Madam Chair, I do not, but thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Cooper?
No.
Commissioner Mills?
I do. I have two requests by the applicant, LS Storage. Hang on one second. It's near the back. It's AZ 19008. Let me find it.
Is it number 13?
Public hearing 13.
And there's...
There's related. Yeah, there's related. That's Old Business 1. And Old Business 2.
Well, we're doing one of them. We're doing the sketch plat.
So that would be Old Business 2.
It looks like 13 is being asked to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay, yes. That one's being... I make a motion to withdraw 13 without prejudice.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And item number 13 is withdrawn without prejudice.
All right. And Old Business...
With a vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you. And Old Business number 1, I'd also like to make a motion. That is also LS Storage LLC, CP 19001. I'd ask for that. The applicant is asking for that to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And item number... Old Business number 1 is also withdrawn without prejudice with a vote of 5 to 0.
Counselor, Old Business number 3, we need to postpone that, but I don't know what date. Georgia Stone?
Right. So, Mr. Mills, I think for purposes of at least this coming up at a point when it might make sense again, I recommend we just postpone it to the first regular meeting in September.
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move that to the first meeting in October, which for the record...
No, September.
September, which for the record is September 5th. Everybody, please vote. And that item is now postponed to...
Madam Chair, just to... And, Mr. Mills, if I could, just to sort of let you know on that one. So there is a sketch plat that is also going to be, at some point, coming in tandem with that, and the objective, I think, of planning staff and my office is going to be that the sketch plat and this item appear on the same agenda for hopeful final disposition. So it's likely that actually may be in October, but I'm hoping we can give a status update in September, and we may have one more public hearing to go with the final decision in October. Just to let you know.
And just if there were to be anybody in the audience that's got any questions or concerns, if they will reach out to me, or to counsel, we'll be glad to try to help you with those.
Agreed.
And also, wasn't there a problem with the ad... with the advertisement as well?
That's why... Well, there's two reasons I'm recommending another public hearing. One is because just the length of time between the first public hearing and the possible decision, but the second reason is because there was a very modest acreage discrepancy between the original legal ad and what actually the final site plan seems to show.
And then lastly, I think that we had a... we needed to remove something from the consent agenda, 4G.
Right. We do. Madam Chair and Board members, you have on your consent agenda as item, I believe it's 4G. Yeah, 4G, Board Authorization to Begin the Nuisance Abatement Process for 4585 Browns Bridge Road. That would entail both code enforcement action and legal action. I believe the commissioner has received notification that the property owner is in fact intending to exercise self-help and take that down themselves, which of course is always the best if we can get that to occur. So at this point, I would recommend that item 4G be withdrawn from the agenda.
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to withdraw the consent agenda items.
Consent agenda 4G.
Please vote.
And Board members, while I do not anticipate this at all, if there is some sort of an untenable delay, we'll bring it back.
But their attorney contacted me, as well as the daughter. The owner's sick, but they have already made contact, and they are removing it themselves, which saves us a lot of money.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any further from you, Commissioner Mills? Commissioner Brown, do you have any changes?
Madam Chair, I'd like to ask that we move public hearing 12 from number 12 to number 1 here at first. We have several members from the neighborhood here, and we could take care of that up front. I would appreciate it.
We have a motion and a second on favor to move public hearing number 12 to the front. Please... Or just please vote. There we go. And that motion passes with a vote of 5 to 0. We will hear public hearing 12 at the beginning of the agenda.
Can Dennis explain maybe how... Because I think some people think they can only speak during public comment. Can you explain maybe to them?
Yeah, we've talked about that. Some still want to speak. We're going to have a meeting up at the neighborhood to discuss the pros and cons of this, so there probably will not be a decision tonight, but they're certainly welcome to, and if we call you up, which we probably will, to discuss and ask some questions tonight also.
But you are going to have a public hearing.
For the good of the whole board.
Yeah, we are going to hold the public hearing. We're just... We've decided to set aside voting until that's a future date. A future date. Okay. Any other changes from you, Commissioner Brown?
No.
Okay. I have a couple myself. Public hearing number 2, I'd like... And needs to be postponed. It is also advertised for August the 15th. That's my motion.
Second.
The motion and a second. Please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of 5 to 0 with public hearing number 2 moved to August 15th. Also, Old Business number 4 that is traveling with that item, I make a motion to remove that from the agenda tonight as it is already advertised for... Or postpone it till August 15th.
Second.
With a motion and a second. Please vote. Commissioner Cooper? If you can answer. There you go. Thank you. And that motion carries with a vote of 5 to 0 as well. Eric Johnson, do you have any changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I do not.
Thank you. Tim Merritt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not.
Thank you. Counselor?
Madam Chair, I do. To remove, actually, this would be Old Business item 5, which is the Roger Hammond parcel. I think it's AZ 180032. Just to report that progress is being made on that issue, and I think we will land the ship at the August 15th, 2019 board meeting. That's when I'm requesting it be postponed to.
Don't move.
Motion to postpone that to August 15th?
Yes, ma'am.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote. And we will hear that hopefully on August the 15th. Anything further from counsel?
I do. Madam Chair, this would be a new business item.
Okay.
This would be an item that was discussed at the work session, and it has been handed out to you. It is a collaboration agreement between Forsyth County and the Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia. This is that partnership the county will be entertaining with respect to North Georgia to do some feasibility work with respect to... Commissioner Mills, fill in the name of the school correctly.
Matt. The historic Matt School, not the new Matt Elementary.
That's correct. And so there is time sensitivity on this, which is why we are putting it on a non-published... It's not on the published agenda. We're adding it tonight because candidly, classes are about to start, and they have to get this going immediately. We just got it back from the university's attorneys, and this is really the final... The first opportunity I've had to give you a final product.
Don't move.
Is this number 4... Business number 4?
That'll be New Business number 4.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a vote of 5 to 0. Any further changes, Counselor?
Madam Chair, none.
Okay. Are there any further changes from staff? Mr. Brown or Mr. Kennard? Mr. Perkins? No?
Madam Chair, I do have one more. Please forgive me. This is another removal, though.
Okay.
Right?
Which... All the time.
New Business item 3. Yeah, that... There's a note under that. That's correct. That needs to be postponed to the August 20th, 2019 work session.
Moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And New Business item number 3 is now moved to August the 20th work session?
Yes, ma'am. That should be it.
Thank you. Anything further? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Madam Chairman, before you adopt the agenda...
Yes, sir.
Just a quick announcement that I would like to ask for consideration of a short executive session tonight, and I do not expect business after that.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Don't move.
Second.
The motion and a second. Please vote. And the amended agenda is adopted with a vote of 5 to 0. Announcements and reports. Commissioner Mills, I think we had an announcement, but we're going to be doing something different.
Yes, our... We had a proclamation for the American Medical Association about drug awareness, and our Drug Council has asked that we postpone it to our next regular Board of Commissioner meeting so they could attend. So we will postpone that.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else from the board have any type of announcement to make this evening?
Oh, we have to have a motion to do that?
It's an agenda item.
It's an announcement.
Yeah, it's just an announcement. I don't know.
Well, so moved.
You guys are going to adopt... I don't know. You're adopting it.
Little CYA.
Well, I'll make a motion then that we formally do that and postpone that item, that announcement.
Second.
Please vote. And that announcement will be made on... The proclamation will be made on August the 15th. At this time, Karen is going to read the rules of the meeting and call up any people who are here to speak with public comments.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and members of the board. I'd like to take a moment to review the meeting procedures. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices. Those who wish to speak during public comments should complete a public comment form that is available just outside this room. Information regarding specific requirements to address the board is listed at the podium. Please state this information prior to speaking. All comments should be directed to the entire board and not to a particular commissioner. There are two public comment opportunities during the meeting for speakers to make a verbal presentation to the board, one now and one prior to Old Business. The number of speakers is limited to 10 now and 10 at the second portion. Speakers are selected on a first-come-first basis and will be heard in the order in which they signed up, with the exception that Forsyth County residents will be heard first, with non-county residents to follow until the entire allotted time has expired. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have four speakers in the first section, and they're all county residents.
Thank you.
Our first speaker is... I apologize. Pankaj Ratenkar.
Hi there.
Madam Chair, respected commissioners, I would like to make a comment about the county's right-of-way abandonment policy. So in general, like, the right-of-way abandonment is governed by the Official Code of Georgia Title 3272. So did a comparison on our neighboring cities and counties and tried to figure out what are their policies and how are we, like, on same grounds as them? So City of Johns Creek, City of Sandy Springs, City of Atlanta, all require 100% of the residents who are on a... On that street to agree with a right-of-abandonment. It's the same thing for Fulton County, too. City of Milton has a tiered structure. For smaller communities, less than 20 lots, they have 100%. For larger communities, more than 90 homes, they have 67%. So my request to the board was, please review... Review the policy. My thinking is it should be at par. We are all governed by the same law. It should be at par with the other counties and cities that we have, so kindly take a look into it. My thinking is it's a big decision, right? Where you live, a homeowner made that decision when they bought the house. So it should be allocated appropriate, like, importance. So one small reference. Our county's speed bump policy... Speed-hump policy says after the engineering department reviews it, 70% of the homeowners have to approve it, right? So if a speed bump requires 70% of the votes, what is the importance of a private street? So please, that was my request to the board. Kindly look into the policy that we have for our county. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to make a comment to... Not directly to you, but to anyone who's looking to speak on the public hearing regarding the gating... The potential gating of the park. There is a public comment section during the hearing, so you can speak at both if you wish, but if you want to wait until the public hearing, it'll be heard at the same time we're considering the item.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions for me?
We can't.
We can't during public comments. We can during the public hearing, but we can't during public comments.
Thank you. That's all I heard. Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Eads.
Could I wait until the public hearing?
Certainly.
Our next speaker is Manju Moses.
Respected commissioners, thank you for giving us this time and opportunity to speak to you and bring our concerns. I'm also from the Parket Creekstone subdivision, and I'm here to present my concerns about abandonment of... Let me say the technical word correctly. Abandonment of public right-of-way. And my concern is in sync with what Panka just said. We've looked at different counties, and we see that other counties have 100% requirement. And we really, when we came into Forsyth, when we bought the house in Forsyth, one of the main reasons was because of low taxes. But then, you know, increasing HOA fees because of... Because we have to privatize the roads is really nulling out the benefit of having low taxes. So it's a real request from our side that you will review the rules and maybe change it to either having the builder make that decision and not having the decision open, or make it available to the homeowners that 100% of them have to agree before. And plus, maybe additional approvals, maybe signatures, and, you know, additional proof to make it more transparent. So it's a kind request to you, and once again, I want to thank you for your time. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Pavan Deshmukh.
I live in Parket Creekstone, and I believe my speakers earlier have talked about their concerns. We are on the same line here. I would not want to have the road prioritized. My comment would be that we made a decision, a conscious decision, to move into the subdivision where the roads were public. So we had a choice, and we took that choice to live there. And now suddenly, if this choice is kind of substantial change to that decision by privatising the roads, it... We should have everyone... 100% of them should say either yes or no. And it should be more transparent. We should see in the application where... Like, I did reach out to the lawyers, ask them if they have it, but our county didn't have the process to keep all their signatures as records. It's just the HOA in this case. So I request that the policy be at par. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Our next speaker is Ethan Underwood.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Ethan Underwood. I'm not certain whether we're talking about the same property, but what was just added with public here... I guess it's a new business number 4. And Commissioner Mills, perhaps you would know exactly what the historic Matt School House, exactly what we're talking about. I'm a little bit concerned. We're representing the Henry Garment family, and they have acquired a piece of property, at least acclaimed a piece of property, which is just to the west of where Coal Mountain Elementary and North Forsyth High School. We're talking about the same property on 369?
Matt School is... Old Matt School's on Banister Road.
Okay. What I was concerned about is our client has found a deed from 1901, and we've been working with the school system on a... An old schoolhouse that I've heard some people refer to as Matt Schoolhouse, and I know there's been a couple of buildings. So I just wanted to make sure that the Board of Commissioners knows that on that property, which is... It adjoins to the west of the North Forsyth School complex, that the Garment family has acquired a title interest in that. It may not be the same property, but I at least wanted to let everybody know that we were... We're all learning about this on the fly, so that was my concern. So I'll just express that the Garments have a claim to an old school property that we're working on, so we'll get that cleared up.
We'll have to cross that another night.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andy Coleman.
Thank you, commissioners. My name's Andy Coleman. I live in Hampton Gulf Village, way up on the north end. Didn't know if I was going to be able to make it tonight, but I wanted to bring something to the attention of the board and potentially legal staff, that a contentious zoning that's been going around the social media realm the last couple of weeks. I had a mother that first brought it to my attention call me that she started off basically saying, "I don't do anything with politics, but I know you're involved, Andy. What in the world is going on with my commissioner bullying everyone?" So I was... I thought I knew maybe what she was talking about. I kind of got in the loop. I started reading some threads, even commented on a few threads, specifically on Facebook. You know, Facebook, the good and the evil of that. Personally, I'm a digital... I have a digital marketing certificate, and for a living, I do marketing on social media. So long story short, as I began to read through these threads and I saw some of the back-and-forth between an elected official in our county and his constituents and constituents outside of his districts, I was appalled. I was embarrassed, and I was adamant that I would make sure whatever is in my power to do to bring it to the attention of you guys and some other people, because that type of behavior is an embarrassment on this county. And if you have any questions, feel free to contact me. I can show you some of the back-and-forth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the board during this time? Please come forward. Madam Chair, I see none.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from the July 18th regular meeting and public hearings?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a vote of 4 to 0, with Commissioner Levent having temporarily left the room. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of the work session, an executive session, of July 23rd, 2019?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Again, that carries with a vote of 4 to 0. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of the special call meeting of July 23rd, 2019?
Don't move.
Second.
Please vote. Motion carries with a vote of 4 to 0. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as amended?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Carries 4 to 0. As we go into public hearings, again, Karen's going to remind everyone of the rules for the public hearing process. As we did earlier, we did move the public hearing for number 12, which is also known as the Parket Creekstone potential abandonment of public right-of-way. Karen, can you read the rules for us, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. For the public hearings portion of the meeting, each side, those in opposition and those in support, are allotted 10 minutes to speak. Those who wish to speak should complete a public hearing form that is available just outside this room. Please fill out both sides and submit your form to the clerk when approaching the podium to speak. If there is more than one speaker for each side, the available time will be divided among the speakers, and we will provide a reminder when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining.
Thank you. We're going to go straight to public hearing number 12. I don't know if Commissioner Brown is going to lead us off in that, or if counsel would like to lead us off in that. Send her count... Send her our counselor's headlines. I'll let you introduce the subject.
Right. Madam Chair and Board members, this is a public hearing with respect to the potential abandonment of county right-of-way within the Park at Creekstone subdivision. I believe you have a resolution that is in your book that indicates that the association has requested the existing right-of-way located within the Park at Creekstone subdivision, identified as Manor View and Terrace Lane, are being sought to be abandoned. That is the resolution that you would actually approve if, in fact, there is an interest in going forward with abandonment. With respect to the underlying law on abandonment, a public hearing is in fact required prior to a Board of Commissioners abandoning county right-of-way. This property is in fact currently county right-of-way. So let me explain what that means. The first thing that it means is, is if the county decides to abandon, that is not the act of getting rid of the property. That is the act of designating that this property no longer serves a county right-of-way purpose. And if, in fact, that's what the board does, then it is stripped of its right-of-way use, and then we will follow the property disposition laws of the state of Georgia to then, in fact, give up the property to the correct owners. I will tell you, based upon a change of the law that I've spoken to a few of you about, that property can then be divested into the name of a bona fide HOA that then will presumably assume the maintenance and operations obligations with respect to that right-of-way... Or former right-of-way. So Board members, that's it. This is the public hearing as required by law this evening, and Madam Chair, that's all I have to add unless Mr. Kennard or Commissioner Brown has anything further.
The one point I would like for you to clarify in this, too, that the abandonment of that right-of-way is with respect to the use of the road, but is not an abandonment of sewer lines.
That is correct, and in fact...
Because I had seen that kind of out in the public view, that water and sewer would also be impacted, and they're not, and I wanted that clear.
No, there will be residual access easements left with respect to that property, and in fact, when we get into deliberations of the actual resolution, I may want to talk to you about some of the safeguards to make sure, because typically, the reason that neighborhoods typically want to abandon is to gate, because they want to have gated access. You can't gate access that's public right-of-way. But of course, if you gate your access, then all of a sudden, the county crews that need to get out there to do the sorts of remediation of lines, etc., are impacted, so we want to make sure that we address that as well.
Thank you. I just wanted that before everybody made their comments, so they could have that information. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And the public hearing is now open with a vote of 5 to 0. If there's anyone who's here to speak in favor of the... Of the move... Motion to abandon or the action to abandon the public right-of-way, please come forward. If there's anyone who is here to speak in opposition, please come forward.
Okay. I'm in opposition.
You have need to state your name at the beginning. I'm sorry. Procedure.
Sorry. I'm David Eads. I don't live in the Park of Creekstone subdivision. I am a property owner. I am a resident of Forsyth County, and I see this not as an HOA issue. I see this more as a property rights issue, because if you abandon... If the county abandons these roads without con... Because if you abandon, if the county abandons these roads without consent, the unconsented homeowners are going to be responsible for this liability. And for that, I think that this shouldn't be done with a 52% majority of residents. And I think that's what they had for this vote. And to me, I mean, that's what it all comes down to. Is I think the county needs a different set of rules, that it shouldn't be decided by an HOA majority. We need something more definitive than that. And I don't know if you have any questions on that. I can go through a whole list of things. But really, I think that that's the biggest issue and really the only thing that's important.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If there's anyone else who's here to speak in opposition?
Hello.
Hi.
Thank you for having us today. My name is Troy Mercado. So I live in the Park at Creekstone. I was actually the first homeowner in the Park at Creekstone. Lived across the street. And when they started breaking ground, we moved over for a bigger house. At that time, Chatsworth is right behind us. We were talking about moving there. We chose not to because people who live there, including the president at the time, that is a gated community. And the homes are more expensive, but also that what would go into the HOA fees is something we also looked at. So now here I am, basically 13 years later, and I'm trying to fight what I didn't want to spend my money on in the first place. So my biggest concern besides that part of it, the cost, is the maintaining in my neighborhood has been lackluster at best. We have an open gate to the two open gates and the retention ponds that are still broken. Kids can go in there and get hurt all the time. We're not taking care of our lawns. We hired a lawn service. As a community, it's not doing a good job. So now we're going to take on a responsibility that no neighborhood really would want after they built. And I just don't see how there's any way we're going to be able to get this done. So that's my first concern. The other concern also is that when, I was originally on the original board, what was four or five years ago. When the new board came in, they were pushing basically safety. And to me, that's a huge mistake. No one can guarantee safety. I'm sure the police do not want anybody guaranteeing safety, as does anybody else in this county. This was kind of pushed through on, hey, we can keep all the bad people out. Well, it's not realistic. And it's actually taking the onus of your home safety and your personal safety and asking somebody else to do it for you. And that's the beginning of what I see as a big problem in our neighborhood. The other thing that I want to talk about was that our big problem as homeowners, if it was 75% or 80%, we would live with it, whatever the percentage is, if we saw the votes. This whole voting process was a mess to begin with. From, here's the dates. Oh, wait, we're going to extend the date because we didn't get all the votes in. And then unfortunately, zero transparency. We've asked for it. We've got no list of who voted for who. But on that note, the HOA, in two cases that we can confirm, then approach people who voted no to ask for yes. So the transparency was on one side, not on the other. We feel very strongly that this vote was pushed through with personal agendas. And that's really, you know, we're looking to see how we can have this stop. And I think what we talked about in the original part was higher percentage to get it pushed through will safeguard against something that we're unfortunately up against right now. Yeah, that's basically it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else? There we go.
My name is Pankaj Rajankar. I would be speaking against the request for right of abandonment. So two of the homeowners, they talked about various reasons. I would highlight the financial aspect of it. Our HOA assessment has progressively gone from 500 to 800 over the last four or five years. And we can present you the numbers. We can show you what is in reserve, how much we have been maintaining. The amount of money that we have right now is sort of barely enough for us to survive at the end of the year. So we do not have enough money in the reserves. Taking a liability like this is, what's bound to happen in the future is we will not be able to maintain the roads by the county standards. And what's going to happen is either the value of my house goes down because of that, or somebody's going to get hurt. And because now the roads are private, again, that's another liability we are taking up. So it's not only a burden on the homeowners. We are taking up additional burden on ourselves, but it's also a burden on the HOA. We are not in that position where we can manage a road. So the financial aspects of it are there. So we request you to look at the numbers. We can provide you the information, and we can talk about that. Any questions?
Not yet. We have to close the public hearing, and then we can open up our questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Come on.
Second.
A motion and a second. Please vote. And the public hearing is now closed with a vote of five to zero. Commissioner Brown, this is in your district. I know we've been-
Yeah, is there anyone from the HOA here tonight? So no one's on the HOA? Okay. So we've set up, we're going to set up a meeting. I'm going to recommend a postponement tool in a motion and a second. But we're going to, we talked before the meeting. We're going to have a, get to the bottom of it and bring it back. I'd like to make a motion that we-
Before you do that, I don't know all the history. Can we discuss the legal history and how this ever happened?
I've got a question too.
Was there a zoning, I mean, was there any kind of conditions, a zoning condition for this or anything?
No, this is an HOA that decided that they wanted to gate the neighborhood and got votes to do it, asked for it. We responded to the HOA as the voice of the community. And it appears that there was not the transparency or the-
Or the accusations.
Right. So I think Commissioner Brown's looking for some more time to investigate that.
So what does, I just have a question. What does a county require from the community before we'll take over any roads from them? What's the standard in which we expect it to be put in condition?
We take a look at the, forgive me, John. You go ahead.
Before we take over a road or before we abandon a road?
Well, we're just abandoning it, but they're not, I mean, they're wanting to privatize their road, correct?
Correct.
So we're just going to abandon it to them? So there's no standards and no cost to the county to do this whatsoever besides abandoning the right-of-way and the roads?
There is no cost associated with this to the county. The process for abandonment is the steps that are outlined by law. And if somebody submits that request, then we forward it to the Kinn's office for their legal review. And as long as it meets the legal requirements, then it's presented to the board for consideration for advertisement of a public hearing.
And when was the last time we re-topped or did any maintenance, major maintenance to the road?
In this subdivision?
Yes.
I don't believe we've done any major maintenance in this subdivision yet.
And when did we-
It's only about, I think it's only about 10 years old.
That's what I was going to ask. So hold on. No, you can't. So typically, roads are what, 12 to 15 years before we have to re-top them?
We try to get 20 years life out of them, but generally, you're in the 15 to 20 year time range.
That's all I have. Just wanted to fill in those blanks. Thank you.
When, I mean, when this came up and we started looking at it, and I, in fact, I've tried to write all the folks back that emailed. And I asked them to look at other communities. And I was trying to get them to help us with our homework. And when they started writing back, which I'd asked Ken to do the same, and we discovered we're way more lenient than almost every other community. Now, when we take over a road, and John, correct me, we ask for 100%.
Yeah, about the county standards.
And yes, and we make every person sign off. And we won't accept a road into our system unless we have 100%. But we were, in order for them, I mean, for us to take it and give it back to them, it's just the 51%.
Right. I think that the issue lies that typically, when an HOA brings forward something like this to Ken's office, the assumption is that they've done it within the, you know, within the bylaws that their community holds. And so-
But some communities don't even have an HOA.
Well, that would be different.
And it's not, to abandon is not required. With an HOA, it's easier. The underlying principles behind the county's abandonment policy with respect to communities that have an HOA is that the covenants authorize the HOA to speak on behalf of the collective. The way the county looks at it is, is the covenants, the covenants control how the community can be binded. And apparently, in this community, it's 50%. But other jurisdictions, for instance, a Milton is a typical example, they don't really care about the covenants. And what I mean by that, they may. But their bigger point is, is it depends on the size of the neighborhood, the percentage of the vote of the folks affected by the abandonment that have to vote in favor. So Milton says, eh, your covenants may allow the HOA to take action based upon 50.1%. But before our governing authority is going to abandon your roads, we're going to require this extra threshold. That's the difference.
And some communities are 100%.
Yeah. They may very well be. That wouldn't surprise me. You know, Milton really, and I don't mean to be referencing Milton, but Milton debated the 100% and finally began to scale it. So the scale was, the smaller the neighborhood, the higher the percent. The larger the neighborhood, it tends to go down. The notion being, you can't get 100% of people in a big neighborhood to a ground.
I don't know when the vote was taken. When was the vote taken? You've got to come to the microphone.
Yeah, sorry. So the vote was taken last April. And so-
Not this year.
No, last year. So people have moved out, people have moved back in. Some people might not even know until this last two weeks that this is even coming upon.
It's a terrible system. Terrible system.
If I may, and just let me interject one more thing. So the standard for abandonment is, there is sort of a twofold standard, whether the road continues to use any public, serve any public service, which I think I've talked to you all about, that there were some abandonments proposed in Milton that actually drove the creation of some new language that got put into the abandonment statutes, which otherwise said, or if the governing authority otherwise believes it's in the best public interest to abandon. All of this process that engineering in my office are having to go through is all well and good. But at the end of the day, the Board of Commissioners can do what the Board of Commissioners believes is in the best interest of the county, period, on this.
And I think one of the important things to keep in mind here too is that simply because a community or an individual or an HOA or anyone requests an abandonment, we are in, it is community, it is a community asset, it is property of the county. And we are in no, by no means required to respond to that. It's not, just because an HOA requests to have roads abandoned and to gate their community, we are not bound to that in any fashion. So that's something everybody should understand that this is, and it's, you know, I know it's tough that everybody's going through this. This has been a horrible exercise. But I think it has pointed to something that we need to look at addressing in our own code.
I agree.
This extra time will certainly give us, give us some time to do that. And I think looking forward, I think there's some other things that we'd want to look at perhaps, including in the equation, when someone comes forward asking for an abandonment, you know, I think it would be reasonable for the community or for the county to ask for them to provide some sort of a statement of their capital reserves, those types of things to make sure, you know, how that, you know, whatever number, whatever percentage of the community that we decide is appropriate, maybe looking to some of our neighbors for that and having our own set of standards as guidance. But ultimately, we still make the decision whether or not we abandon the property, even if 100% of people ask for it.
I totally agree. And I also think though, Ken, typically, we take the position, or I have found, when neighbors start coming at me about covenants, you and everybody in planning starts going, oh, we don't get involved in covenants. We let that be between neighbors and neighbors, and the county doesn't get involved in covenants.
Right.
And all of a sudden, we're putting ourselves involved with covenants with this. And I don't know why we're doing that.
I don't think it's-
Well, okay. And let me respond to that. And I will always say that the issue on covenants has historically been just as you articulated. I'm not taking away that one bit. I think that with respect to land use decisions, covenants have taken on greater significance, I would say, maybe in the last five years than they ever have. We now require them to be identified in land use applications. And they can give the board an overall flavor of the community and what perhaps is allowed in the community. So I would say that covenants have at least maybe some circumstantial evidence. But you're talking about what the covenants say and how they dictate and bind county decision-making, and they don't.
That's why I don't like us having a policy that makes us get into the nuts and bolts with these covenants. I think our policy needs to get away from that.
I understand.
I still don't think that we are actually getting into the nuts and bolts of their covenants necessarily because what transpired really was the county working with the authorized agent, if you will, of the neighborhood, who, whatever their rules are internally, we weren't looking at their rules. I think, but now observing what their rules are and seeing how that impacts the community, it's established the need for us to have our own set of rules.
I agree.
Does that make sense?
If all of a sudden, we're trying to figure out, did their covenants say what percentage? And did their covenants make it where they had to be transparent? And did their covenants show that where the vote was taken and when it was taken? And did it reveal to them? And all of a sudden, we're being put in this position of an arbitrator between them and that? And did they do it correctly? And traditionally, I've been told, we don't play that role.
Right.
I just think we're better off if we have a policy that is generic in terms, that is more about the good of the community.
And to echo that, all I will say is, is in this circumstance, the covenants, I think, do trigger a process. In other words, I think engineering followed the policy that we have in place. And I know you're not saying otherwise. You're suggesting maybe the policy needs dusting off, is what I'm hearing you saying. But I will then go back and default again and say, this decision is your decision, irrespective of what the neighbors may want or what the HOA want. At the end of the day, this is about what the County Board of Commissioners wants.
And I would argue, if, where are the people that wanted it so bad? This is a public hearing. Where are they?
Commissioner Brown, I know you wanted to postpone this. I just would, oh, yeah, I was want to make sure in your motion you clarified you want to come back as old business or as another public hearing when you make that motion. But Commissioner Cooper, please, please go ahead.
Just to clarify, and I'm just curious. It's not that I'm going to get involved, just curious, okay? I understand. In your votes inside your HOA, you guys go with a simple majority? You don't go with two-thirds? No, so that's where the other part of the confusion is, right? So I'm, you know, not a lawyer. I've had many people read it. Some people read it and said, no, this takes two-thirds. Some people read it and said, no, it's enough for the 50%. I don't have the, I don't have the knowledge to be able to give you that answer. I just know we've gotten a few different answers. And then going back, and I understand exactly what you're saying. You know, if it's about opening a pool, we're not here. But this is a huge cost. And if, whatever you guys decide, and we're okay with whatever comes out, we're probably the first to come in front of you with this situation, but certainly won't be the last. If this gets done and people start seeing a gate go up, then that's kind of where it will trigger. So, you know, long-term, you're 100% right. I mean, checks and balances should be in place.
Well, the sad thing is, is these people that didn't even show up could be making the decision. They can sell their house, and y'all are going to be the ones footing the bill.
I'm going to take it one step further. We've had a board change since they voted. So three people on the board who pushed it through are no longer on the board.
I would recommend some of you that care a lot ought to put your name in the hat to run for the position.
I did. I did. And I got up and said I was against the gate, and hence I'm standing here. Three people on the board were all for the gate.
So I had a comment to make on the same lines. HOAs are run by volunteers. Our HOA makes mistakes. We don't have meeting minutes. Wrong, collection notices are sent to wrong people. So if things like that can happen, such a major decision relying on HOA, I don't think is the right way to go. I think a county should have its own policies similar to what our neighboring counties have. And that should specify how many people have to sign in, how many people, like what's the percentage? So everything is clear. Right now, things are not clear, and everybody's interpreting it in their own way, which is causing confusion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'd like to move, we bring it back as old business, September 5th.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Please vote. And the motion carries four to zero with Commissioner Levent, Levent out of the room. Okay. Onto public hearing.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Onto public hearing number one.
Onto public hearing number one.
Application VA 190026, this is public hearing number one. It's in Commission District Number Five. It's a public hearing for Gail Kane and Ramon Roque Alzano regarding the variance to Forsyth County Unified Development Code Table 15.2 for a lot size variance of 0.07 acres to allow a lot to be 0.93 acres instead of their minimum requirement of one acre on property that's currently zoned A1. The property is located on Holly Court.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Come on.
The motion is second, please vote. And we are open with a vote of four to zero. If there's anyone who is here to speak in favor of this application, please come forward at this time.
I'm Gail Kane, and we are here requesting the .07 variance to help out our family. So, appreciate your time.
We may have some questions for you, so I'm going to call... Did you want to speak as well?
I would go.
No, you're just there for moral support.
Oh, you did.
Okay. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Thank you. The, it is now closed with a vote of four to zero, and this falls in my district. I'm not going to torture you guys, I'm going to make a motion to approve the request for the variance 190026 to allow a .07 acre variance on the lot spacemen, on the lot size minimum for 2245 and 2275 Holly Court.
Yes.
The motion is second, please vote. And the motion carries with a vote of four to zero, Commissioner Levent still out of the meeting. You're done. Thank you. Public hearing number two has been postponed to August 15th. Public hearing number three.
Good evening. Vanessa Goldman from the Department of Planning and Community Development. Tonight is the third public hearing for the Southeast Forsyth Residential Design Standards. What I'd like to do tonight is actually recap the comments that we heard from the board that evening, and after I do this recap, we'll briefly scroll the draft before you. Just as a note, the draft has not changed in any way since the hearing on July 11th. Some of these comments are simply clarifications of the current draft. There was a question about what code standards would trump if there was any form of conflict, and the way the current draft is worded, the Southeast Forsyth Residential Standards would trump any other design standards in the code. In terms of whether additions or renovations would have to comply with the new residential standards, no, they would not. That is currently outlined in the draft. There was a comment from the board that they wish to keep the language in the current draft, which specifies that application requirements for elevations and details pertaining to the house design would come in at the building permit stage rather than the rezoning stage. There was also questions about the tree requirements. Those were actually part of the countywide standards that were adopted on June 6, and indeed, that tree planting is outside of the right-of-way. There was concern about stucco as an exterior finish. There is currently an item in the draft that pertains to the lower wall finish. We would have to amend it. If the board wishes to retain stucco as an acceptable lower wall finish, we would have to then specify that that stucco be at least four inches above grade, and this is to comport with building code requirements. So we would need to hear from the board, A, do you wish to retain stucco, and if so, we can go ahead and make the change. There was also some preference that was communicated to delete the current landscape maintenance requirements we have in the draft. If this is a direction that the board wishes to go to, staff would have to have a formal direction to do so. And finally, there was some concern that was briefly mentioned about the relationship of tree canopy and subdivision street lighting. We love trees, we know they also can create some challenges. What I would say is, you know, we, we would not be able to assure that there wouldn't be any conflict when a tree becomes mature, you know, in a 15, 20, 25-year period. Upon further discussion with the arborist, we're, we're working with the constraint that in the front yard, we are always having to assure that there is enough growing medium, growing space for a tree, you know, for the roots. We also have to make sure that that placement, of course, isn't adversely impacting the relationship to the driveway, and then to the sidewalk, and then to the lighting. Again, I can assure that there would not be a conflict. We currently do have the tree in the front yard, five feet from the right-of-way. If the board sees this as a significant issue that they wish addressed, we, we can certainly move forward with some form of recommendation. What I would like to do now is if we can just pull up the actual draft and just scroll it fairly briefly, really for members of the audience, of course, this draft is in your book. As a point of clarification, the green font that is shown is simply showing you the countywide residential standards that were adopted on June 6, and then the blue and red font that is shown in the draft are the new additions and strikes. And I can certainly answer any questions after the public hearing is closed. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll give them a minute here to finish scrolling through that. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Come on.
The motion is second, please vote. And we're open with a vote of four to zero. Is there anyone who is here to speak in favor of, of this initiative? Please come forward.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Stacy Guy. I'm here as a resident of Southeast Forsyth, and also as a member of the Steering Committee that put this, this work together. And I urge you tonight to, to go ahead and pass this and adopt this, this before you. You know, we have an identity problem in South Forsyth, and we're unincorporated. We have four zip codes that represent this particular area from four different cities, from three different counties. We don't know who we are. We don't have a city of our own. We have businesses that open all the time in South Forsyth that identify as Johns Creek. I've seen the Johns Creek Chamber and the Alpharetta Chamber at ribbon-cutting events in my own backyard. I don't know who we are. Our neighbors, our neighboring jurisdictions are creating brands and values and identities and senses of place that we're not, and they're, they're quite frankly, running circles around us in, in this regard. And I think people are going to start voting with their feet, and they're going to start moving to these places because they, they feel a draw, and they feel a place and a sense of belonging there. And we, quite frankly, need to get busy creating this. I think this, the residential standards are really setting the table for a much larger discussion, and, and that is, is how do, how do we get to that sense of place and that sense of, of belonging, and that sense of identity and branding? And I think that, I can't speak for all of my, my Steering Committee members, but I think a lot of us are really anxious to get started on that conversation. We can't do it until this is done. So I, I think the residential standards get us there, and it gets the ball rolling, and that's why I'd like to see it adopted this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I am Kirk Winterstein. I live in Forsyth County. I speak only for myself, and this is what I believe. I believe that the citizens of Milton, Sandy Springs, Dunwoodie, Peachtree Corners, Berkeley Lake, Johns Creek, and Sharon Springs voted for a city. And the reason these citizens are voting for a city is because they want an identity. They want a sense of community, and they want a greater control over the standards in their community. The proposed Southeast Forsyth Design Standards are going to increase the standards for new construction, and they will protect and enhance the value of the community. I believe these standards are moderate. I do not believe these standards are too high. Now let's take a look for a moment at the demographics that we're dealing with. I think we're all familiar with the area we're dealing with. The citizen of this area is the healthiest citizen in the state of Georgia. This area has a low crime rate because these citizens are busy contributing to society. They are the highest educated citizen in the state. They are the most productive citizen in the state, and they have the highest household income. Given these demographics and the location, the proposed design standards are clearly within reason. I speak in favor because there is a desire for these standards. These standards are going to be effective in protecting and enhancing value. These standards are clearly within reason, and these standards respect the citizen's right to develop private property, and they respect the citizen's right to the welfare, the value, and the future opportunities of his county. I speak in favor, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? Is there anyone else who is here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, Ethan Underwood with Miles Hansford-Tallant. I'm also speaking on behalf of the Atlanta Home Builders Association. We spent hours and hours and hours with this board, with neighbors, working on particularly issues that we're dealing with filing procedures, development procedures, and other issues regarding certain design standards. For example, I mean, I think you all hired consultants, and everyone concluded that a 15% side window requirement is virtually impossible to meet, but it, we were really close, so we compromised on a 13% requirement. All of that is being put away. We've also discussed our concern that the county is opening itself up to, to legal challenges because of the application requirements. If you look in Section 11-9.2, what it's saying is, everything, all these standards become effective even if you're partway through a development. So if you've got seven phases of a neighborhood, and you're on phase eight, these codes go back to all those things we negotiated out because everyone recognized that with vested rights challenges, and, and it's going to open the county up to a lot of procedural problems and legal fees. Now, I'm not here to threaten, what I'm here to say is, we made a really, really good compromise procedurally, and this takes it back. We've expressed concern, and people talk about higher standards in South Forsyth. If you make it where, when we file zoning applications, the only folks who can file are folks with a picture of exactly what they're going to build, you're dealing with nothing but national developers. That's all you'll see. And that's the complaint we've had from everyone from South Forsyth, is saying, we don't want brown boxes, we want architectural character. You're creating a system that will result in that. And I think, I mean frankly, we're, we're creating a separate process for a part of the county. The city failed in South Forsyth, yet we are essentially making a division of the planning department that says, okay, you're going to have a totally different application process, you're going to have totally different application standards. It's really a de facto city is what we're creating to accommodate some of the folks. Let's just give them a city. I mean, if that's what we're really going for, let's stop the, the additional staff members here, let's stop having to increase county costs that way. We, we said, or I said, several folks said they didn't want a city because of increasing the cost. We're doing it for them. So respectfully, I don't think that we should be creating dual processes for, based upon, or separate processes to apply for land use based upon where in the county you live. But I would also urge, you need to be really careful what you ask for, because the procedures you're creating, the standards really aren't that big of a problem. Nobody objected to most of the, 90% of the, uh, uh, standards that were created, nobody objected to that. It's the procedures that you're creating. I'll submit to you, we do Milton, we do zonings in Milton, we do zonings in Alpharetta, we do zonings in Johns Creek, they're nowhere near as difficult as this, and it's going to drive away your good developers, and it's going to bring in the folks who come in, as we said last time. Here's my book, here's what they look like, there's four different versions, pick which one you like, and they're the only ones who can play in the sandbox. So respectfully, we'd ask that you mirror the procedures that were adopted in the countywide standards, and give it a little more time to try to work through those details. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Come on.
The motion is second, please vote.
Well, Commissioner Brown and I have been talking about this a little bit because this does impact primarily District Two, but a good bit of District Five as well, and the, the only thing I really would have any questions about are the couple of items that were brought to our attention with respect to needing some staff direction on them. I think that there's going, that there are some, some really good ways that we can look at a possible pre-screening, some sort of a, either appointed board or elected board that can certainly be a screening process for those to make sure prior to it even hitting the planning stage, hitting the planning department, that can take care of a lot of that. One thing to bear in mind is that this, Mr. Underwood did refer to this as, you know, this is like a city, give them a city. Well, this truly is a part of a larger initiative, the Village Concept for Southeast Forsyth. This is but one piece, and it is meant to be different than the base standards of the county. It is meant to work in conjunction with forthcoming commercial standards and public spaces, the way public spaces are handled and branding and that type of thing. So to be quite frank, this was what the county offered to the residents of Southeast Forsyth who did not get their city even though they voted for, by a majority. So, you know, I, I don't know if Commissioner Brown has any questions to be answered. I wrote down a couple of notes.
After we postponed the last time we, we met again, and I clarified everything, and I had to clarify.
The one, the one question we had was, could people use vinyl windows, or, I mean, you know, that if, did we get that answer? I think it said in there, didn't it Vanessa, that you could if you...
Well, replacement, remember this, though, that this is, these are building standards that are for subdivisions. This is not for an individual homeowner who wants to come in and put replacement windows on their home, or, so, we're talking about, we're talking about a standard level of product that is introduced into the community.
And that's one of the questions that came up. Once, once enforcement later on, once the, the subdivision starts to age, then that's very problematic, trying to keep up with all of that. But I have, all transparency, I have vinyl windows on my house, and I like them quite a bit, so.
I have a question.
Wait, Vanessa's trying to answer.
I'm sorry, I, yeah, I, let, let me answer Commissioner Mills' questions about vinyl windows. Currently, we have a code requirement of, we only prohibit exterior wall cladding that's vinyl, so we permit vinyl windows. In addition, you know, any remodeling of a home would not fall under the standards, but we would not be prohibiting vinyl windows now, or if these design standards were adopted, we would not prohibit them either.
Thank you for the clarification. I would like to ask Mr. Guy, since you did serve on that Steering Committee, to speak to the issue of stucco as a cladding for the base of the home, and where the, where the committee was with respect to that product as opposed to any other masonry products, brick, stone.
Yeah, I, I don't remember that we discussed it a whole lot, but I'd be okay if it were removed, I personally.
If it was not included?
Correct.
Because I believe it's not included at the present time.
In the county standards, I think that's right.
It's, Vanessa, your statement was that the, the stucco was not an available lower treatment.
For the lower wall finish, if we were to retain stucco, staff would just have to amend it to make it clear that the stucco would have to be at least four inches above, above the dirt.
Okay.
And that's for a building code requirement. So we can either remove it or retain it, and just know that we need to add that four-inch separation from the... separation from the ground.
So we should give direction in whatever motion is made with respect to removing...
AC, wait a second. I've got a question for you two, since you're in the hot seat.
Okay.
Do you feel like, and I know this is a broad question, and you might not even want to try to answer it, but so much is being said about identity, and I know, I think we've still got that to go on the branding. This is just the first part of it. But do you feel like that this is a, that in regard to some of the things that Mr. Underwood said, that this is a step that will ensure that the city won't come forward? I mean, like in doing this, that we are, we're taking a step in the right direction to meet the needs of the community?
Are you saying that you want to pass this in an effort to not encourage the city to come forward? I mean, I don't think that was on anybody's mind.
No, I'm saying, is it, is it a step in the right direction of creating some type of satisfaction?
I think, I think part of the, part of the draw of people that supported the city of Sharon Springs was to create a sense of identity, and I think this gets there. Obviously, there was a lot more involved, multifaceted decision-making involved in creating a city, but that was certainly an element of it, and I think this gets us there.
We, as a county, claim that we can deliver that sense of place.
Right.
Which, there's more to a sense of place than just this.
There is, and that's why I said, this is but one piece of that larger puzzle. And the other thing to bear in mind is, this is a framework that we've, that we've developed that, you know, once we've exited this process, it can be replicated for other parts of the county. It's not just about, I mean, this initiative and the output from this is about Southeast Forsyth, but it is a process we can adopt and go through for other parts of the county as well, and that was, that was part of why we went through this exercise. Obviously, it was a part of the county that felt so strongly about it that they, you know, voted for a city, so...
What does it do to the Peach Street Parkway overlay?
It's not going to conflict with it, and it would, that will be more of something to take up when we're doing the commercial portion of it, but it won't conflict with it. It should not conflict with it.
I don't recall there being anything residential related in the Peach Street Parkway overlay.
Yeah, I mean, there's scant few, I mean, there's a couple of subdivisions that hang off of it. Beyond that, it's not, it's not a residential corridor, it's a commercial corridor.
Any further clarifications that you would like to hear from us? Vanessa, you ran through a couple of things. I guess the maintenance issue.
The maintenance issue, and again, I just want to reiterate, this was discussed at the last hearing, but we would be looking at a, the same implementation delay to coincide with the countywide standards of December 6th of this year. That was the staff recommendation, which we would like for the board to entertain.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, and it will also give us some time to think through some of the, some of the front-end processes that we might be able to do to help alleviate some of that pressure from staff, to have maybe speak with the steering committee again, and look and see if we could have some sort of a sub-area planning group that reviews applications to help get them prepared to go through the process. Did you want to give any direction on the, on the maintenance issue? Commissioner Brown?
Is that statement is still in there with respect to the ongoing maintenance?
Yes, it is. We have not changed the draft in any way since the last hearing.
Which then makes that a, which then makes that a code enforcement issue for us to make sure the subdivisions are upkeeping their maintenance, which I don't know that that's...
What we heard at the, during the last discussion was, it did appear that at least some board members would prefer that this be an HOA-directed task rather than placed on the county.
And just, just for some assurances there, all of that would have to be maintained, this is probably a Mr. Brown question, all of those things would have to be in place during this, the selling period, the development period. Anyway, all of those standards would have to be maintained. Once it's turned over to the HOA, that's, that's the timeframe we're talking about, where that maintenance gap would be.
Yes, we do do installation checks, so we absolutely make sure that anything in their landscape plan that's a required as a part of development, whether on the lot or within the subdivision, within, you know, HOA areas, would be installed. Of course, buffers do have to be maintained, and of course, have to be satisfactorily growing and alive and so forth, but beyond that installation check, then it would be on the HOA to ensure that that plant material remains alive.
Vanessa, one thing you mentioned about the trees, and we talked about when we were looking at the tree ordinance, and I know I brought it up, the townhome section of Hampton, where they've got trees on those small tiny lots that are causing all their driveways, the root zones are making the driveways all come up, and they've even had it, a lot more different problems because of it, and we said that when we redid the tree ordinance, we were going to look at having the specifications of certain kind of trees to be in relation to the size of lots. And I think with what you brought up, if we would do that, we would eliminate some of the worries and problems if we wouldn't plant the wrong trees in the wrong kind of lots.
That is a great point, and again, the landscape plan, since as part of the countywide standards, not what's being considered for adoption tonight, but I'll call it the extra tree. We already require for the tree ordinance, one front yard tree, this, there's a second front yard tree. The county arborists would be reviewing the landscape plan and looking at, again, the tree selection and the available space for growth. That is a central concern the arborist has, and that would be evaluated at the time the landscape plan is submitted.
But do we need to make sure that's in there, or is he just going to do that? Because what's happening, we're having to cut down trees after we're requiring them to go in, which is foolish.
I have a suggestion. I'm actually coming back to the board, the recent resolution on some of the applicability standards related to the countywide. I'm swinging back to the board on that matter, and I think because that extra tree is not part of the Southeast Forsyth standards, it's actually part of the countywide standards, I think perhaps we can address it at that time when we're going back into those standards. And what I will do is, I will work with the arborists to see what language would be appropriate.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Would anyone like to offer a motion?
And if I may, Madam Chair, making sure I'm capturing where the board is going into discussion, if you're going to make a motion, then I think the motion may be to, and again, I don't want to set the language, you make the motion you want to, but I just want to make sure this language is in there in some capacity, that you intend to approve these UDC modifications this evening, perhaps as set forth in your book, but they will not be effective, binding, or enforceable until December 6th of 2019. So they're approved, but they do not become operative and live, effective, binding, or enforceable until December 6th of 2019.
And again, just for the purposes of the public, again, the edits under consideration are blue and red. The green font is simply in there to highlight the countywide standards that have already been adopted.
Just for confusion.
But otherwise, but are not effective, binding, and enforceable except in Districts Four and Five.
Would anyone like to offer a motion? I'll take a stab at it.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Southeast Forsyth residential design standards to be immediately adopted, but only effective, binding, and enforceable starting December 6th, with direction to staff to delete the language with respect to ongoing maintenance as, it's not enforceable unless it's our code enforcement, and to delete stucco as a material for the lower portion of the wall as described by staff.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Thank you, everyone. Public hearing number four.
Good evening, Commissioners, Madam Chair. We're here to ask the board to adopt the resolution to transmit our 2018 annual impact fee update to Georgia Mountain Regional Commission. I want to introduce Mark McKinnon. He's our impact fee administrator. He's going to make a short presentation ahead of the public hearing.
Thank you, Becky. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Mark McKinnon. I am the impact fee administrator and project accountant for Forsyth County. We are here to provide a brief summary of the 2018 impact fee update. The county of Forsyth is required to submit an annual update to the GRC, GMRC, the Georgia Mountain Regional Commission, and the State Department of Community Affairs. The submission updates our status as a qualified local government, and the 2018 impact fee update package, which you have in front of you, includes a financial report, a capital improvement element, and a community work program showing the next five years and the commitments the impact fees will have on each area. This information is also available on our county website if anyone is interested tonight to see what our plans for the impact fees will be for the next five years. The public ad and the impact fee update have been available to the public since July 10th, when the public ad was ran. Next, we will show where we stand and cover the schedule and financials of the 2018 update. All right, so attached here is a planning schedule showing the remaining key dates of our adoption process. We have brought forth to the board and to the public a final version of the 2018 impact fee update. The action needed tonight, as shown, is the adoption of the transmittal resolution, which will be available to sign after the presentation. Once approval has been given by the board, we will transmit to GMRC and DCA tomorrow. After the 60-day review process is up by GMRC, we will come back for our final adoption in October, once adopted. We will inform GMRC, and we will have our status renewed as a qualified local government. Next, we will see a breakdown of our financials in 2018. So here we see a list of all the revenues shown for the different funds and the areas that have been collected for 2018. Each area is a subject, is to be used only in that area with, within the guidelines of the impact fee study update published in 2016 and the impact fee ordinance. Let's see here, our biggest collectors were the roads, parks, and the public safety funds totaling 10.8 million in collections for 2018. Here's a breakdown of the areas we spent impact fees on in 2018. As you see, the public safety fund was our biggest area of need last year, as we purchased land for the fire training complex, and we started our newest fire station, Fire Station 11, which is expected to have a breakthrough very soon. We also purchased land for our newest library, Southwest Forsyth Library. And here we see the fund balances ending 2018. This shows our capacity to handle upcoming projects and where our needs are for spending in the future. Our biggest balances here are the roads, parks, and rec, and public safety funds, as these are the biggest collectors each year. Our annual update shows where we have programmed these balances and what the upcoming projects are for the next five years of the total of 19.6 million we have available. This concludes the impact fee update, and I will be here for any questions the board or public has.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
With motion, a second, please vote. Public hearing is now open with a vote of five to zero. Is there anyone who is here to speak in favor of the presented material? Or in opposition? Or to comment? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Please vote. Any questions from the board?
No, but I'm amazed nobody's here, but I'm not amazed. They put out there on all the social medias, we haven't done anything with our impact fees, and there they are.
So I do have a question. Is there any statutory limit on how long those impact fees can sit in a fund balance, or is there anything that governs a period of time into which they must be expended? Because obviously, we're collecting those fees to spend on the, on an impact that may stretch out over a longer period of time, and so it's why we see these fund balances, and the expenditures don't match the...
Right. Yes, if I may, they need to be at least encumbered or committed within six years of the quarter in which they're collecting. And of late, we haven't had much trouble in committing them to projects.
No trouble figuring them. Most of our projects are so big...
They must be at least committed within six years.
Six years.
And most of the projects are so big, that it takes a while for them to collect. I think the biggest thing, and we need to work on our communications, I am amazed that constantly on social media, I mean constantly, people are saying, "I can't believe our county doesn't charge an impact fee. I think it's ridiculous developers don't pay impact fees." I bet I read that 10 or 15 times a week. I mean, those sorry commissioners are just letting those developers buy, not charging them any impact fees. They don't collect impact fees on anything. And I'm like, okay, here we go again. We've only been collecting them for, I mean, how many years now?
And we increased them...
Well over a decade.
That was when we upped them, was then. When was it?
Except for roads, I think it started in 2004.
2004 is when it started, and then we added roads.
And increased from 1,600 to 5,900 in '17.
And if you remember back, I know that Todd was on the board, but we even increased it higher than the consultant recommended. We went to a level higher than the guy recommended.
There was, there was a recommendation that was not sustainable based upon a lot of the TAVT money coming in. Then, then we, when we retooled it to get what we thought was defensible, then there was another recommendation, and we made it a little bit...
The level. It was based on levels, and we went to the Level C or whatever that was above the level that he had...
We upped our service. That's right.
But I don't know how we communicate that, but, and I know that people don't let facts get in the way, but...
They're not going there. We have to push it out to them, and even then, they don't want to believe it.
Maybe since we're adopting tonight, we can put something out and try one more time.
Would anyone like to offer a motion with respect to transmitting this information to GMRC? And are you sending it to GMRC or DCA? Or both? Well, it goes from GMRC to DCA.
We are sending them to both tomorrow. GMRC is our main point of contact, and will be your review, director view.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve this? So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is that what you just made the motion?
Yeah, I asked for somebody to make a motion to approve it, and I did, so, please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Thank you. Public hearing number five.
Public hearing number five, Madam Chair. This is consideration of an amendment to Chapter Seven of the UDC to add and clarify requirements relating to building permits and certificates of occupancy, et cetera. This is the second public hearing. The first public hearing having been in front of the Planning Commission, and Molly S. Wine from my office will make the board presentation this evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. So this revision to the UDC kind of goes hand in hand with the next public hearing that you're going to have on the revisions to the third-party inspection ordinance. Basically, the state law updates to third-party inspections and plan reviews prompted staff to take a look at Chapter Seven and evaluate it. So the main changes you're seeing here with regard to that have to do with specific authorization for plan review to be done by third-party plan reviewers, which is something the state law provides. It also goes into greater detail on what kind of inspections the building official requires and what inspections shall occur, and the procedures related to that, you know, basically the timing and making sure that, you know, developments don't go forward without getting approval of their inspections. Tweaked some language on approvals of inspections, basically saying that, not really substantively changing approval of an inspection, just tweaking the language there. You'll also see that we have incorporated the swimming pool and spa code, so we have several international, internationally adopted codes that Georgia has adopted, and then UN Turk have also adopted. in turn have also adopted, and we've just added that swimming pool code to that long list of those international codes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
No.
With motion as second, please vote. And we're open with a vote of five to zero. Is there anyone who is here to speak in favor of the changes to this? Is there anyone who is here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
With motion as second, please vote. Any questions from staff, from the Commissioners? Any questions for staff or for Ms. S. Wine?
And we're already doing it, right?
Yes, ma'am. Would anyone like to offer a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the revisions to the third-party inspection ordinance known as Ordinance 117 as presented...
Commissioner Mills, I think you may, you may, and very reasonable to do this, you may be on six.
Oh, I'm sorry. I make a motion that we approve the amendments to Chapter 7 of the Forsyth County Unified Development Code to add and clarify the requirements as presented by staff.
Second.
With a motion as second, please vote.
I got ahead of myself.
And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Public hearing number six.
Madam Chair, Board members, public hearing number six may just simply be the different side of the same coin as number five. This is a public hearing regarding the third-party inspection ordinance. This is actually, since it's not part of the UDC, this has actually already been in front of you once, so this is the second public hearing tonight. The thought was we could do five and six in tandem. And as before, Ms. S. Wine will do the presentation.
Thank you. Alright, Commissioners, so you've seen this once before already, and again, I just referenced that the state law has been updated pretty recently as to third-party inspections. So staff and I took a look at our ordinance and made some updates specifically to incorporate the procedures that are provided by state law. And rather than specifically outlining every individual procedure that we have to follow and so that we don't have to update the ordinance anytime state law changes, we've just incorporated those by reference. So staff will be deferring in their third-party inspections and plan reviews process to state law, which will make it easier on y'all so that you don't have to have another public hearing hopefully later on down the road if the state law changes. We've also specifically added that third-party plan reviews can occur. So right now, or previously, the county was completing all of the plan reviews. State law provides that plan reviews can be completed by third parties, so that has been added. And in addition to the inspections that we just referenced in the UDC that y'all have adopted in Chapter 7, and actually, staff and I are already working on this, hopefully to get it to you, now, third-party inspections can also do certain things having to do with our code, which is actually in turn included in the state law updates. So we were already anticipating it, and then state law incorporated it. So that's pretty much where we are. We've added some updates for what kind of requirements plan reviewers have to follow and added some corresponding discipline, I guess, penalties for violations, just like y'all adopted earlier this year with regard to third-party inspections.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
No.
With motion as second, please vote. We're open with a vote of five to zero. Is there anyone who is here to speak in favor of these changes? Is there anyone who is here to speak in opposition to these changes? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
With a motion as second, please vote. We're now closed with a vote of five to zero. Any questions from the Commissioners for staff or for Ms. S. Wine? Would anyone like to offer a motion?
Move, we approve the proposed revisions to third-party inspection ordinance 117 as briefed.
Second with a question. Tom, we're not, we are not in any way expecting more or less of third-party inspectors than we are our own inspectors.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion and a second. If there's no further questions, please vote. And that motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Public hearing number seven.
Madam Chair, Board members, public hearing number seven is a second public hearing with respect to what I'm calling an omnibus modification to our alcohol ordinance that was the product of a lot of folks and staff working together to include an economic development prong of this as well, and Ms. S. Wine will be providing the presentation this evening.
Thank you. Go ahead, please present.
Alright, so this is your second public hearing, so you could adopt today. The revisions, as Ken just mentioned, are all pretty much tied to economic development. So we have removed the language relating to leases having to be provided to staff and the requirements of those leases, specifically as to establishments for anything basically other than a liquor store. And the reason for that is because packaged stores that sell distilled spirits are required under state law to provide their lease to the county and for that lease provision to not be tied to the sale of alcohol as it pertains to rent being paid. So we had to leave it in as to package sales for distilled spirits, but otherwise, staff won't have to be reviewing leases anymore, which should hopefully help them in their review of alcohol licenses. We've also added a definition for micro-distilleries to be consistent with the rest of our code. We also added language. There's a particular fencing requirement or screening requirement having to do with consumption of alcohol on patios outside in places like Halcyon or those sorts of developments, and we've removed that language, specifically thinking about the fact that y'all just recently approved outdoor consumption of alcohol within those sorts of developments. So it didn't really make sense to have to have that wall specifically designating an area for the consumption of alcohol if people can be walking around with it. We also added certain economic development language regarding zoning, so the board can basically approve the, I guess, a facility or a business to sell alcohol even if it's not in a particular zoning district as otherwise outlined if the county thinks it's in the best interests. And we also have removed languages requiring licensees to open for business within six months. Practically speaking, it's not really financially feasible for someone to do that, but if it happens, we're not going to be basically revoking their license at that point. They're going to have to renew within six more months anyway, so we've just taken that requirement out.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
No.
With a motion as second, please vote. We're open with a vote of now five to zero. If there's anyone who is here to speak in favor of these changes to the alcohol ordinance, please come forward at this time. If there's anyone who is here to speak in opposition to these changes? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
With motion as second, please vote. We're now closed with a vote of five to zero. I do have a question for Counselor. I just want to know how this change, the ordinance, would be interpreted with respect to a location that sells growlers.
And could you give me some specific, Commissioner, on what your application to growlers would be?
The rent structure prohibition that is still in place for a place that is considered package sales, how would this ordinance interpret a location that sells by the growler?
Well, I mean, I would tend to think of a growler as a package sale. Molly, you don't agree? Then go correct for me.
I'm sorry. When I said package sales, I should have been a little bit more specific.
Liquor?
Under state law, yes, it has to do with distilled spirits. So since beers, malt beverages...
Just distilled.
And one more quick question. Ken and Molly, does this capture the one about the percentage of sales requirement such as Halcyon that we've had to add on?
Yeah, that was one of the main, I think I can't answer this one until you correct me, but I think that was one of the main drivers of this.
Okay. I know it said leases, so I thought, but I just didn't hear the operative words, percentage of sales.
And is there any, Molly, is there anybody else in the county that this applies to at this time? Is this mostly just for Halcyon, the way they do their leases?
No, so when y'all approved the revision just a couple of months ago for outdoor consumption, I believe that was intended to capture the collection as well. So outdoor consumption at the collection would also benefit from the patio screening issue.
What's the final square footage you picked for that? Minimum?
I don't remember off the top of my head, but I did look at it specifically with the collection in mind.
We may not be able to quote it, Commissioner, but we did. That was a subject of some discussion by the board. I think we got that right.
It's around 400. I can't remember what you settled on there. Okay.
Any further questions from the board? Would anyone like to offer a motion?
I move that we accept revisions to alcohol ordinance, otherwise known as Ordinance 68, as briefed by counsel.
Second.
With a motion as second, please vote. That motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Number eight.
Yes, Madam Chairman, Board members. Number eight is a public hearing consideration of amendment to Forsyth County Speed Zone Ordinance, otherwise known as Forsyth County Ordinance 78, regarding a reduced speed limit from 50 miles per hour to 45 miles per hour on State Route 20, beginning 634 feet west of Carla Drive to North Corners Parkway, West City Limits of Coming, and to otherwise ratify Ordinance 78 and other related purposes. This request comes to the board from the Department of Transportation. This will be the first public hearing, and it will require two public hearings.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
No.
With a motion as second, please vote. And we're open with a vote of five to zero. If there's anyone who is here to speak in favor of this change to the speed limits on Highway 20, correct? Please come forward at this time. Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
Please vote. And the motion, the public hearing is now closed with a vote of five to zero. We're obviously not adopting this this evening, so is there any discussion the board would like to have on this item at this time?
Referee, Madam Chair.
Alright, we're all ready to move forward then. Public hearing number nine.
Madam Chair, Board members, public hearing number nine is a second public hearing with respect to proposed modifications to Ordinance 102 or Chapter 54 of the Code of Forsyth County. It is our park and recreation ordinance. This is with respect to the introduction of prohibitions on vaping in parks. So in the, if you go into a couple of pages in, you will see some underlying highlighted language that attempts to define the term vape or vaping or to vape, as well as alternative nicotine products. And so when you begin to read it now and context, it now provides that it is a violation of this article for any person to vape, which is new, smoke, chew, dip, or otherwise use or consume in any manner tobacco, tobacco products, or alternative nicotine products. And of course, this board has a great deal of history with what alternative nicotine products are. I think you know exactly what our alternative nicotine ordinance prohibits. In any form, in any enclosed building, in any park or recreation facility owned, leased, or managed by the county. So one of the more, and that's a notable change. The second section is an even more notable change. It shall be a violation of this article for any person to vape, smoke, chew, dip, or otherwise use or consume in any manner tobacco, tobacco products, or alternative nicotine products in any form within the outdoor boundaries of Forsyth County parks. That is a big change. The original incarnation of this modification obviously prohibited all use of tobacco products to include smoking and vaping in the interior spaces. With respect to the exterior spaces, we were prohibiting altogether smoking and vaping. And in the last public hearing, you directed my office to also include any form of tobacco use, including oral tobacco. And that is what you have in front of you this evening, and you have the right to approve this evening. Should you do so, that will, at least on paper, be the end of tobacco use, including vaping in Forsyth County parks. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
No.
With a motion as second, please vote. If there's anyone who is here to speak in favor of these changes to our tobacco ordinance, please come forward at this time. Our guess is park and rec ordinance with respect to tobacco.
My name is Erica Lopez. I work as a health educator for chronic diseases and health promotion at District 2 Public Health, which Forsyth is part of our program. And we are here just happy to say that we support any initiative that works towards healthy communities in any of the counties that we work with. We have a flyer that we made for all the residents, and I know I don't have too much time, but I have enough flyers for everyone. And we just mentioned all the information about the tobacco, the danger that it brings, not only when you smoke tobacco, but also second-hand smoke. We don't have much research now. Tobacco research is plenty, but not much about vaping, but the danger that is doing right now, especially to our youth population, is a very concern for us. So I have a letter from our district director that she sent, and we are just here to let you know that we support any of your initiatives. Forsyth is one of the counties with the healthiest population in the state. You are number one in health outcomes, I don't know if you knew this, and number three in health related to the health factors. So that doesn't happen only when people live healthy or have resources or anything like that, but also happen when you, as lawmakers or policy implementation people, can do it and you help them to do it. So this is part of the, you are part of the result. I will invite you to read the letter from our district director. We just wanted to say that we are proud to support any initiative to make all Forsyth County Parks and Recreation Facilities smoke-free. If you need any information or research or any literature, we have plenty of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor of this change? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Tonya Spears, and I'm opposition. I'm a smoker, and I've turned to vaping, and my charges keep getting taken, but I go back to vaping. But I mean, it's outside. I can understand inside a building, enclosed building, but outside, I mean, it's outside, you know, air. It's free country. So I don't, I mean, I know it's a public place, it's a park, children are there, but when I do smoke in a park, I don't, you know, smoke by people. So that's my opposition to it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
Please vote. And the motion is closed with a vote of five to zero. Any comments or questions from the Commissioners?
I have, just as I've always done, as I brought this initiative forward, it's not just about somebody breathing in what you're blowing out or exhaling or what's coming from the item which you're holding your hand that's producing your tobacco smoke or vape. It's about the influence on the children as well, and our parks are very much a family type of an atmosphere, and for me, this absolutely makes sense. And I'm glad to see we've gotten the support now from the Forsyth County Health Department and the District 2. Now, we have a letter from them as well, and we had our Park and Rec Board had an anonymous vote also to support this as well.
Any other comments or questions? Is there, would anyone like to offer a motion?
I would, Madam Chair. I'd like to approve the ordinance by the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners modifying the Forsyth County Park and Recreation Ordinance 102, identified in Article 1 and Chapter 54 of the Code of Forsyth County as described by county in our books. County Attorney.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Everyone, please vote.
Hard to forget those work sessions.
I know, it gets in your brain. That vote carries with a vote of five to zero. Thank you. Number 10.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Item Number 10 is a first public hearing this evening with respect to an Ordinance 132, Small Wireless Facilities and Antenna Ordinance. This is a product of the new state law. You may recall that the new state law becomes effective and operational on October 1st of 2019 for most of the things in the state law. You may recall that a previous work session, we adopted a resolution requiring that providers provide their rollout plans to the county, which we have done. And now, again, to set the table for Forsyth County to literally have our ordinance in place before the state law comes into place. We are attempting to do that with the first public hearing this evening and with possible adoption in September. And as before with some of the other items, Ms. S. Wine from my office will be conducting the public hearing.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. So I have a PowerPoint just so that you have something to reference, but until it comes up, I'll just go ahead. up, I'll just go ahead and say, as Ken did, that the impetus for the ordinance is the state law, so it's SB 66. And the ordinance in large part doesn't go into effect until October 1st. You were able to go ahead and adopt that resolution that was on the consent agenda tonight, requiring the meeting specifically because that paragraph, or that section in the state law was effective more immediately. And that was basically to get those meetings going with the developers. So just a reminder of what small cell is, it's basically the antenna that is going to go on top of poles, or buildings, or, you know, pretty much anything generally close to the right-of-way to further 5G for data capacity, not so much service, but capacity. When you have crowded people, sometimes you might have five bars of service, but you might not be able to get anywhere with it. So that's the purpose of it. So these are just some examples of those poles, just to basically refresh your memory, since it's been a while since we talked about this. So the reason for the ordinance, as I just said, it's because of SB 66, so I'm not going to go over that again with you. But the main reason for having an ordinance, even though it's state law, covers a lot of the aspects of what is going to end up being in the ordinance, and really, we just refer to a lot of the provisions in state law, is because without an ordinance, they are still authorized to install in the right-of-way even without an agreement. So if you recall, probably about this time, maybe a little bit later last year, y'all adopted that right-of-way agreement for small cell after meeting with the stakeholders and trying to come up with the best option for this. But the state law pretty much says, even if AT&amp;T hasn't entered into that agreement as required actually in the UDC right now, and per y'all's resolution, they still have the right to enter into the right-of-way. So that's pretty much the reason for doing this ordinance. It basically covers people like AT&amp;T, or Crown Castle, people like that who have not actually entered into the agreement. I think Mobility is the only one who actually ever signed it. So it's, again, to allow the installation or co-location of those antenna in the right-of-way. They can either install new poles or co-locate, but again, that's going to be in county right-of-way. So that's what this covers. It's not anything else. It's not the installation on buildings that aren't in the right-of-way, on private property, just county right-of-way. So some important preliminary concepts are basically that state law allows for us to establish fees and rates, and basically some other terms, as long as it complies with state law. And by resolution or ordinance, we can accomplish these things. And again, no agreement is required. State law does allow for an agreement, so we can negotiate with an entity, say AT&amp;T wanted to enter into an agreement with you. You could negotiate fees and rates that differ from state law, though frankly, I highly doubt that would happen. But it's possibility. But again, they don't have to enter into an agreement, and we can no longer require that agreement, so.
Let's use Verizon, since they're in the audience.
Okay, Verizon. So Verizon, Crown Castle, whoever, you could negotiate separately with them. State law doesn't preclude that, but again, with the ordinance, you wouldn't really need to anymore. That said, the agreement that you have with Mobility, or if anybody else chooses to enter into an agreement with the county prior to October 1st, that agreement would remain effective despite the impact of the state law going into effect on August, October 1st, until that agreement is otherwise terminated or expires. So the agreement with Mobility will stand until, by the terms of that agreement, or if y'all decide to terminate it, or Mobility terminates it according to the terms of the agreement, that stands. State law would just provide for anybody else. So again, if you don't have a resolution or an ordinance, then the act is going to govern, which is the main reason we're here, and we have a public hearing on this. So one of the main provisions in the ordinance that is really one of the necessities of having the ordinance is due to the classification of authorities. So you have three different classifications, and Forsyth County ends up falling into this Class II authority. This is based on how many parcels the county has. We have just over 90,000 parcels, so we're a Class II authority. The reason this matters, and the reason it needs to be in the ordinance, is because state law says, as a mandate, if you're a Class I authority, so if you have over 100,000 parcels, then a mandatory meeting is required with any developer prior to them submitting an application. For Class II authorities, state law just provides that the county may require that meeting. And so by adopting this ordinance, and specifically putting that in the ordinance, though y'all have already done it by resolution, we're just reemphasizing the county is wanting to have those meetings, or wanting to meet with the Verizans, the Crown Castles, the AT&amp;Ts, before they actually come in and submit an application. We've actually, I think, have already had one of those, so it's a beneficial aspect to the ordinance. State law also requires, or provides, some maximum fees. So the state law does provide a cap. We can't charge more than what state law provides, but the ordinance, the state law doesn't say what you have to charge, or what's mandatory. So by adopting an ordinance and specifically saying that we are, as the county, going to require you to pay any of the maximum fees as set forth in the statute, we're going to get the maximum that we possibly can there. So I've put those on the board for you. It's 100 to 50, up to 1,000, depending on what kind of an application it is. The 1,000 is for a new pole, but that's for the installation to be required, rather than as an option under state law. And that way, there's no question as to what these developers are going to have to come to with the county with their application fees. No room for negotiation, we've said it. It's the same thing for the rates, which I've put up here. One thing to note, and the reason we didn't put in the ordinance the actual fees and just defer to state law, is because state law has an escalating mechanism that says basically every year, the fees are going to increase by 2.5%. So we didn't put the actual fees in the ordinance, we just defer to state law and note that the rates are going to increase. Applications are pretty standard as far as the statute is concerned, and you'll notice on these, and I'm not going to go through them one by one with you, don't worry, a lot of it mirrors what you had already put in that master right-of-way agreement that you adopted. There are some differences, and the approval process is different. Basically, everything is going to be administratively approved, just like, you know, any other right-of-way type permit that engineering processes. But they will have to provide all of the information that state law requires, and staff will be reviewing all of that. So one thing of note on that, though, is that, just like in your right-of-way agreement that you had asked for and approved, is that co-location is still the preferred method. So state law and our ordinance both reflect that co-location is preferred, and applicants actually have to provide documented evidence as to why they need to install a new pole in the right-of-way, as opposed to co-locating, so that we don't end up with a crowded right-of-way with lots and lots of poles. And other than that, I'll be happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
A motion, a second please vote. And we're open with a vote of five to zero. Is there anyone who is here to speak in favor of us adopting this ordinance? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition to us adopting this ordinance? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
A motion, a second please vote. Closed with a vote of five to zero. Sure, the other Commissioners may have some comments, but I will tell you that we've already had one such meeting, and it was, I think, fairly productive, getting an understanding of what that provider was looking to do within the county. You know, they were thankfully transparent enough with us to even tell us about their plans for things that were not in our right-of-way. So, you know, I think that us mirroring the state law in this is the wise approach, you know, as much as possible. You know, will, anybody who is a provider, will meet with you now, if you choose to come in.
Do we have any, I know they don't want to share with their competitors or anything, but do we have anything that we can tell our citizens how many of these poles are coming forward?
Right. So we don't yet, because we don't really have a feel for it. There, you know, we don't know which providers are looking to get into this market yet. I know, as does our engineering department, was made aware of what the plans were for one particular provider. Once we've worked through this process a little bit, I think we'll have a better idea of what it's going to look like. I will tell you this, it's not the hundreds and hundreds of poles I think that people are envisioning in their head. It's a fairly discreet technology. It is not something that blankets large areas. It's typically in areas of intensity in their fairly small units. So I think the impact that, you know, when we're visualizing these as being, you know, covering a small area, we were envisioning that they would just be all over the place every so, you know, many feet, and that's not really how they're utilized.
Do you think it'd be possible, in the sake of true transparency, that we have a presentation of any provider that wants to give them, and it could be on this room, and it could be on TV cameras, and everybody could see exactly what it might look like by the actual professionals, and we're not second guessing?
Well, the feedback that I've gotten from speaking with providers is that is proprietary information.
But they'll release some. They released a whole bunch in that room that you're referring to? And they did it in front of each other. Yes, they kept some of that to themselves.
Well, you know.
But it would be nice for the public to understand what they're really, really getting ready to look at and get into, and it's coming.
I think the easiest way to do that would be, in a very limited scope, to maybe have a present, have a brief presentation, but what we're going to end up with in that particular setting is really just going to be a marketing presentation.
Well, I don't know if that's.
It's not.
Were you in the last meeting?
I do know that it's true.
Were you in the last meeting?
I met with the provider and with staff, and went over exactly what their plans were, and spoke with them directly.
All of them, or just one?
With, they're not going to enter a room together and tell you where they're putting poles and how many. They're just not.
They did. There's, how many were in that room, Commissioner Mills, when you and I sat with them?
Oh. Did they lay out their map for you? Because they did in this meeting, and they're not going to do that in front of each other.
They showed a little bit of their map. They sure did. They gave an idea. But it's nice for them to show us their new technology, that it's maybe not as big as it was a few years ago, what it might look like, so the public has a better idea, in the sake of transparency. I think it's a great idea.
It might be more.
I wouldn't want to make it minimize it in any way for it, fashion or form, let them show what they want to show, and just let it be out in the open.
I would like to have some kind of a framework around that, because it's the type of thing that if we just invite a bunch of people to come and give marketing presentations, we'll be here till midnight.
Well, we don't want marketing presentations.
And we won't necessarily have achieved that. So let's, I would say this, I would say, let's think about the questions we want answered, and let's, you know, maybe what basic overview of the technology is required, but even at that point, I think we're going to have a lot of repetition. So I really, I'm not sure what the best way to do that is, and it does seem to me to be something that is more appropriate for one of two things, either a special meeting where we address that issue, or a work session, not necessarily on a night when we're doing a lot of public hearings.
Right. I think you're probably right about the work session. I think you probably call them all in and let them talk to one another, let them decide who's going to be the lead person. No, they're not going to release all the proprietary stuff to one another, but it'll sure get a lot of information and let our public understand what's coming, because when it starts to happen, and we don't do anything, we're going to get the phone calls, we're going to get yelled at. We can at least get it out there in advance, and in the sake of transparency, so they can see what in the world's coming.
I believe County Manager had a comment.
Well, on that, Commissioners, I think that that's one of the items that you scheduled for a special called work session on the 12th, 13th.
Can you tell us what you have set up, sir?
Well, at this point, there is no agenda related to that item.
That's the same meeting, Molly Scott.
We have several items on that. I think, I think back to your discussion, the question is, how much are they willing to share? We can certainly take Board direction, if you want to give it tonight or Tuesday, about what you'd like to see at that meeting. One thing I'd remind you is that I think the city of Coming also has the opportunity to have 5G, and we're not talking about the placement within the city, that's between the providers and the city of Coming.
I'm sure that our public, you know, when we put these large towers that we approve, they become pretty controversial sometimes. And it'd be nice just to have these professionals tell us exactly how the large towers, they have to have those still, to support the smaller towers, and some of these little antennas then feed to the bigger antennas, they'll tell us how many, and just give everybody an idea of how far apart they're going to be spread. They're not sharing their proprietary stuff with that. Everybody knows what that has to be for them to work properly, but the public doesn't know. And it'd be nice, or maybe most of the public doesn't know, and it'd be nice to allow them to do their presentation, us take notes like we always do, and in the presentation have, if we have any questions, ask them questions. And I don't know that you want to do it on the 12th, it may be too soon.
Well, I think we can give them that direction on Tuesday, whether or not we want to receive that on the 12th.
And I don't care if it's in October, just as long as before they start laying this out, rolling this out, then our public has an idea of what's coming. It's very important.
Madam Chair, just real quick, just a little bit of background. So yes, you all are talking about two different types of meetings, and I don't think you're disputing that that's the case.
I agree.
The meeting you're talking about is a let the public know what this looks like. The meeting that's anticipated in the statute, I know a little bit about that meeting. That meeting was designed to allow jurisdictions privately without a public meeting. In fact, it's actually not even really, it doesn't need to be a board meeting. It's more of a staff-driven affair, because the reason for the meeting was to allow the technical staffs to know if they're about to get 300 applications come October 1st, so we literally can begin to staff up. That's the basis for that. That's that meeting.
Right.
Your meeting is more of a, what does this look like, and what are you about to see in the right-of-way?
Because I will tell y'all, if we don't get ahead of this and let the public know what's coming, give them an idea, our emails are going to go off the hook. And it wears us out when that happens. So why don't we just be super transparent, and let them do a presentation, and let the public hear and learn.
Well, obviously, we're not acting on this tonight. I think this is.
No, but it'd be nice if we give some staff some direction, maybe they can set this up, work session, figure out everybody's schedule list, special work session sometime in October. There's no rush, but it'd be nice to get it out there.
Well, you know, maybe we, do you want to give them that direction this evening? Do we even know what direction to give them? Or is that something that we all take at home tonight, and we come back for our work session on Tuesday, and give that direction as to what exactly we're looking for in that meeting?
And that's fine, and we can all agree on that then, there's no need to rush it. But I think October's soon enough, just before they start putting this stuff up on all these poles everywhere, we need to let a presentation happen for the public to understand what's coming.
Would you be okay then with adding a work session item for Tuesday, just to get our direction on that?
Yeah, so moved.
Okay. Second.
Can we vote on that again, to make sure it gets there?
There's been a motion and second for this item being placed on the August.
Please vote.
Yes.
Well, I don't know if you want to vote or not, but if you're the first.
There you go. And it passes five to zero to bring.
Thank you.
Future planning for how we'll conduct that meeting next Tuesday.
So just for purposes of my clerk, so the motion, that the direction you just gave, was that on the August 6th work session agenda, there's going to be an agenda item called Board Direction Regarding 5G Presentation.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All righty, moving on to number 11.
I think Ms. Eswan's going to let me do this one.
Whoa.
Madam Chair, Board Members, thank you very much. This is actually another abandonment. This is the Long Suffering Cezon Lane in the Provence subdivision abandonment. And just like with the park at Creekstone, there is a requirement to abandon, and that is, is that we have a public hearing. This is that public hearing, and if you look in your resolution, you ought to go back about three pages, and you see a plaque. And on that plaque, you're going to see an entrance off of Ronald Reagan Boulevard onto Cezon Lane, and you ought to see some pretty dark lines that reflect about a .204 acre parcel. That is what we're talking about abandoning, which would mean, and again, as I explained already, that means it is no longer part of the county right-of-way structure. What that means is if it's abandoned, is that, and I don't want to get ahead of the speaker, but my understanding is, is they will then gate it. But the difference here, unlike the previous subdivision, is the internal roadways within this subdivision are not going to be private. They're still going to be public. It is just this particular entrance will be gated, and that will facilitate the gating. So after the public hearing, should the Board of Commissioners determine it is in the best interest of the county to abandon that section of right-of-way, you could then adopt this resolution, which serves not only to resolve to abandonment, to abandon it, but also, upon certain triggers being satisfied, will allow the execution of a deed of abandonment into the neighborhood. Before you speak, Madam Chair, I want to go over the three triggers that have to be satisfied, even if you adopt this resolution, three sort of conditions precedent have to be satisfied before the abandonment becomes effective. That is, number one, submission by Provence HOA to the county of an engineered gate plan, and approval of such plan by the Engineering Department, Fire, and Water and Sewer. Number two, submission by Provence HOA to the county of a revised subdivision plat. And then number three, closing of certain parcels, specifically 20, 37, 42, and 55 of the Ronald Reagan Boulevard Extension Project. Madam Chair, that's my presentation.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
No move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second please vote. We are open with a vote of five to zero. You're here to speak in favor?
My name's John Ribler. I'm the Secretary of the Provence HOA. The Ronald Reagan Extension. Um, the Ronald Reagan Extension is, is, is going to be a major thoroughfare in our community, very important to the county and obviously important to our neighborhood. Um, our neighborhood was developed over a 12-year period. It got stopped during the middle of the recession. Two of, the first developer went bankrupt. Through all that period of time, everybody who bought in was told, yes, there's going to be a new road coming behind you. But it was just vacant land. Nobody knew exactly how close to the neighborhood it was going to be, anything like that. So it was about a year and a half ago that we got the, we started to get the picture of what was going to happen. Um, and realized that the road is going to be coming up right to the back of certain houses that we're, that we, and I can say something about your, your comment about covenants too. That our covenants and the zoning law made no provision for any kind of easement or border where we could put up a fence or anything like that. So we had to deal with all these issues, also find out everything. We engaged Commissioner Brown very early on and I have to say that, and not just Commissioner Brown, Ma- Manager Johnson, the, the County Attorney's Department, the Engineering Department has been absolutely, you know, we've been engaged very, very thoroughly with them on, on, on the entire process. Now, we have already had an engineering study done, um, and worked with the county, with the Engineering Office on that. Uh, what the, the gist of it is, we right now have a one entrance community in and out. Originally, there were going to be two, two entrances onto Ronald Reagan. The county already abandoned one of the entrance, one of the entrances, so we could close that off. Um, but even with that, without, without this solution, we would go from being a very safe, secure, nice community to being a shortcut essentially. From everybody off of Stony Point to Ronald Reagan Boulevard. This whole solution is that we're, that we've coming up with, this could be a million-dollar project that the HOA is going to spend to actually, we have to do a half, we have a half-mile border onto Ronald Reagan. Again, that's nothing, we've, we've already changed our declaration. We've already gone, been down this process a long time. And again, I don't know how much detail I need to get into. But, uh, this, this resolution is part of an overall plan that we've been working on the county with for, for about a year and a half now. So be glad to answer any questions and, and hopefully we can, uh, we, we, we can, you know, get this taken care of.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's here to speak in favor? Is there anyone who's here to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Let me, let me just say, say one other thing about this because I noticed early on.
We just pulled a vote, but you know what? We may ask you some questions. So we're going to close the public hearing.
Okay.
And we're closed with a vote of five to zero, but stand, stand tight there because the commissioner may have some questions. Um, commissioners, do you have any comments or questions about what has been negotiated between Provence and the commissioner, the attorney, and our staff?
I am dying to know what he had to say.
Ask him what he had to say.
Who, who?
It's you. I'm wanting you to finish what you was inside you.
You know, earlier, what, earlier was, is very interesting when you talked about having, having just, you know, changed your ordinances to, to, or your planning processes to make sure the covenants of these HOAs have to be, you know, submitted in advance. Because what we've discovered in this whole process is that these covenants are basically cookie cutter templates. That developers basically just plug on every community, one after another. When, when, and especially with this project, when it, when we came to looking at our covenants and what we had to do to, to, to essentially, we couldn't, in fact, when the county made offers for the easements on our properties, we had to change our covenants because the covenants specifically prohibited the HOA from actually doing any deals with, with an entity. And so they knew the road was coming in. The covenant should have been written to, 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 to match. That was just my comment about, about, about covenants and, uh, and we've been through a lot. We had.
But that was a fun process.
It was very, it was very, it was, it's been very, and I have to say.
It's an eye-opener.
My, my, my first basic dealing with government, and I have to tell you, and I told Commissioner Brown this a lot of times. I mean, I see this as, again, there was, there were frictions, there were tensions, there were things like that. But we worked through it all and I just thought it was an excellent example of how, you know, government can work with a citizens group to make something happen that benefits everybody. Because I think that the, uh, that you're talking about branding, our ability to brand our neighborhood and have a unique identity. And to have the values appreciate along Ronald Reagan is really dependent on, on, on this solution. And, um, and we hope to be, you know, help be stewards of the roads. We really think the road itself is going to be an asset to us and something on our values. So again, you see it as a partnership.
Thank you. Thank you for working with us.
Are there any further questions? Counselor, do you need to have those, um, those different points called out specifically or the parcels enumerated?
Madam Chairman, I don't. If the Board of Commissioners simply wants to approve the resolution that is in your packet, that triggers everything else. It's fine.
Thank you. Would anyone like to?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
If I could, I would like to just make one statement for the record, just to expand a little bit on what Ken's introduction gave to you guys. Is that I just want to make it known that this is a unique situation and that the entrance currently does not exist because Ronald Reagan is not yet built. So, you know, that's why the board's able to consider that this, you know, for this particular subdivision for, for entrance access that was proposed to Ronald Reagan Boulevard.
Thank you. Would anyone like to offer a motion?
I will.
Mr. Brown?
So this has been a long time coming and this will help us get Ronald Reagan down the road further. So this is a really, thank you, thank you. So I'd like to move that we approve the resolution to abandon that portion specified, specified in brief by council of public right-of-way within Cezon Lane in Province subdivision as briefed.
Second. We have a motion in second. Please vote. That motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't think you're going to sleep tonight. You're too excited.
We already, we already dealt with item number 12 at the beginning of the meeting. Item number 13 was post, oh, excuse me, was withdrawn without prejudice. We are now to our second public comment section. Karen will announce the public comment speakers and read our rules.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We're now at the second public comment portion of tonight's meeting. There are no signed up speakers, but it looks like we have one.
Good evening. I'm R.G. Carroll. I'm a Forsyth County resident for 26 years. I'm going to be brief. Some of you will recall, and Mr. Gerard will recall this conversation or this before the board. In June of 2017, I spoke on the very same topic. In recent days, I've witnessed posts from another Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' personal Facebook profile in which is also used to communicate the business of our county and also with our constituents on social media. Forsyth County Ordinance 77B, Article 3, Section 8, recites OCGA 4510, 3, Subsection 8. Any member of a board, a county board shall never engage in conduct which is unbecoming to a member or constitutes a breach of public trust. The question before this board again is whether a commissioner addressing official business by making defamatory, false accusations, and borderline slanderous comments and attacks on Facebook to its citizens constitute a breach of public trust and behavior unbecoming an elected public official. Thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone else would like to address the board, please come forward at this time. Madam Chair, I see none.
Thank you. Old Business Number One was also withdrawn without prejudice, which brings us to Old Business Number Two. Commissioner Mills, this is in your district. Uh, Tom Brown, you want to brief us on this, please?
SB 190004 is the application number. The applicant is LS Storage LLC. It's located in Commission District Number Four. This is a decision regarding the sketch plat approval for LS Storage LLC to build a self-service mini warehouse totaling 11,400 square feet on 1.577 acres of property that's currently zoned CBD. The applicant's also requesting a variance to reduce the minimum lot size of a self-service storage development from two acres to 1.5. The property is located north of Delonica Highway. There are no redlined versions of the condition. So what's shown on the screen will be the only thing that we show tonight, and the public hearing was held on June 20th.
Thank you. Commissioner Mills, what's your pleasure on this? Do you have some questions or comments for the attorney or?
Do we have Exhibit A? We need it put up.
I'm sorry, there are a couple of drafts. I thought we had asked to reserve the right-of-way on Highway Nine as opposed to dedicate.
Uh, we talked to John and, or to staff and they don't recommend reserving.
We respectfully don't agree to it.
That's not the first time.
I don't know. I mean, I, I typically write the conditions that staff ask me to. And did you see it?
Have a poll up now.
He's referencing the dedication or versus reserving of right-of-way?
One moment, Commissioner.
I have a question for the counselor. Um, in a situation where they want to reserve as opposed to dedicate, is it, is it implicit that any improvements that they make, if they should try to use that property that is reserved as opposed to dedicate in the meantime, would not be subject to any type of payment for them when that, when the, when the reservation is exercised? So if they should choose to landscape it, build their required fencing, any of that type of use, that they don't get another bite at the apple with respect to trying to collect for those improvements?
Yeah, I think the difference is, is the reservation language means that it will be required by staff that it be depicted on any plats and plans, and therefore they're not going to be allowed to be able to put anything in it. I think that's the key with respect to the reservation. The dedication is another sort of animal. Um, they are different. They have, I think they have different meanings in this context.
I will add that, uh, it's a, it's typically a standard condition that the board has put on all zonings as recommended by our office. But if the board did elect to reserve the right-of-way in lieu of dedication, then that would allow them to then setback from the right-of-way and not from the reservation.
That's, that's, yeah. That's a concern.
I think the code is very clear. It states that you cannot build in future right-of-way. We're, we have no disagreement that the future right-of-way is 60 feet from the center line of Highway Nine. So any setbacks.
Thought it was a hundred.
But should you, but should you build using that, the, the right-of-way as opposed to the reservation line, you, your client could be immediately out of compliance with any of our regulations with respect to setbacks off of the right-of-way for structures. So they could build right, you know, with, with that larger, with that larger space in mind and could immediately find themselves out of compliance.
The sketch plat contemplates that. In fact, all our land use applications, land use applications contemplates that. Is that we show the future right-of-way and then all setbacks are measured from the future right-of-way. So on the sketch plat that was submitted, all landscape strips, the required wall, they'll have to be outside of the future right-of-way and measured from that line. We simply want the ability to be compensated for the additional right-of-way when GDOT acquires it. But we, we'll state for the record and our, our understanding is the code is, we cannot get building permits or any type of, uh, uh, I guess, land disturbance permit that would have landscaping or structures in that future right-of-way.
Commissioner Mills, I agree with Mr. Kennard that the dedication is very customary and has been fairly pervasive in this context in its sketch plat. I could get comfortable with the reservation as well.
And are you supposed to be showing, do you have a copy of the sketch plat to display?
Uh, I can't. I believe, I don't know if our staff has that, but we did submit it.
Do you have one to show? Okay.
If the reservation is allowed in lieu of dedication, I would ask that it be specific, be stated that the setback would be from the reserved right-of-way.
And we add that on as a condition?
Absolutely. We added in that, we'd add it in that same condition.
Do we need to show the sketch plat or anything to do with it, with this now? Is there any need?
No, no. I mean, I think it's useful for just a visual aid for the board to consider it. But if, it's all going to be based on the language of the condition that I'll try to capture what, what John mentioned.
And, and the future right-of-way is shown. You can see the, the rectangular shape that is between the developable area and the existing right-of-way.
Was there anything else? Was there a variance or anything?
No. The, the only reason we filed this application is there's no, this was zoned at a time when there were no site plans required for zoning and we have to have a site plan on file.
All right. Ken, are you ready?
Mm-hmm. I need, do need to have the conditions back up. So the, the first condition will be the same except for the word reserve in place of dedicate. And then a second sentence would need to be that all setbacks shall be from the reservation line so depicted. John, is that fine?
That's fine.
Commissioner Mills, I, forgive me. Uh, Tom Brown pointed out, we did file a technical variance for the lot size. Our position has been, we don't need a variance. The property is zoned, it's 1.7 some odd acre and it's zoned with a zoning condition that says we can develop nothing but mini warehouses. Since that was passed, the county has said that, well, in order to do any kind of storage, you have to have a minimum of two acres. So I've argued, and I apologize, I've argued that, well, because of that zoning condition, a variance is not required. However, staff has said, if you're going forward with the application, you need to, um, file under the current version of the code. So we, we did file that under protest. I mean, I guess the position is at this point, if that variance is not granted, the property is completely undevelopable and, and that would constitute.
Well, that's why I asked about the variance because it said on our sheet that you'd applied for a variance.
I, I had forgotten that. We objected to that and so, but I apologize. Our position.
You have so many protests, I can't keep up with them. I mean, I just can't.
We, we simply want to be able to develop the property for what it was zoned for.
All right. Do you, Ken, you better, it was owned in 2005? I don't know.
Long time ago.
Well, and you know, we had to, this is the one that had three different zonings in. in, and they wanted to do outside storage rather than what it was zoned for.
What would the comp plan call for?
It doesn't call for outside storage or warehouses.
This is another example of, you know, you get a zoning, you know, pooper, get off the pot. Things change, standards change, communities change.
But Tom, you were of the mindset, it didn't have to have a site plan.
It did not have to have a sketch plat.
I mean, a sketch plat.
Properties under five acres, a sketch plat was not a requirement, but the applicant opted to submit one.
That was what I kept telling you. Why did you even come in for anything? You had a zoning, you didn't need a sketch plat.
Well, because the county passed a moratorium and was threatening to change the underlying zoning, so we want to protect our position on this property.
I never, it never crossed my mind.
Raise comes from lawyer up.
Ken, are you...
I'm ready.
We're ready.
All right, so the motion would be to approve the sketch plat application SP 190004 to include the requested variance with the conditions as displayed substituting reserve for dedication, and also adding a second sentence to Paragraph One that all setbacks shall be from the depicted right-of-way reservation line.
And with the exhibit.
And with the displayed exhibit.
So moved.
Motion is second, please vote. And the motion carries with, Commissioner Levin, are you going to vote?
I got my finger on a button, I haven't decided yet.
Well, push one. It's not going to change the outcome, but you push whatever button you want.
I push the black one.
The black one?
Yes.
Push a button. Thank you. And the motion carries with a vote of four to one. Item number three was postponed until September 5th. Old Business Item Four was postponed till August the 15th. Old Business Number Five was postponed to August the 15th, also with the notation that progress was being made, which brings us to New Business Number One.
Madam Chair, it does. New Business Number One was actually an item that was slated for the consent agenda, and it was my request that it actually come to your new business agenda. You have already approved this at the work session. This is the resolution that sets the policy of the county, that with respect to county employees that die in the line of duty, that the county will in fact fund their dependents' COBRA, that's the shorthand term we're using, it's actually not COBRA for public employees, but we're calling it COBRA because that's what everyone thinks of it as, for 36 months. During that discussion, Commissioner Levin asked a question and said, this would of course include those that have a event on the job that results in their death, even if they do not die literally during their hours of service on the county. And I believed the answer was yes as to the intent, but upon further reflection and reading the resolution, I was not sure that that concept, that nuanced concept, was captured appropriately. So if you look in the resolution, you'll see some red language that says that who are killed in the line of duty or who sustain an injury in the line of duty directly leading to death. So this was simply a kind of a housekeeping thing by me to make sure your intention was captured. Madam Chair, that's all.
Thank you. What is the, does the board have any questions or comments, or would anyone like to offer a motion?
Does Ron have something to say?
Ron, did you want to speak?
I could.
You absolutely may. Please come forward.
Anytime.
It's a rarity, it's a rarity, come and stay. I wanted to share with you something you may not have known. First of all, publicly, thank you for doing this. When I brought it to you, each and every one of you jumped after the untimely death of Deputy First Class Spencer England. Most of you know about the tragic death of Deputy Dixon in Hall County recently, and I don't know if you follow, but I just read where their Board of Commissioners just adopted or is taking under consideration, doing it for three years. And I came to you and asked for a year, and there's three years, we looked at the COBRA, some federal law that did that, and you all jumped and said, hey, we can do better than that. And then you said, hey, what about other employees who could lose their life as a result of their service, maybe not even public service, public safety officers in Forsyth County? So I just want to come say kudos and thank you on behalf of all the men and women in the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up.
What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll offer a motion. I'd like to move that we approve the declaration to fund certain COBRA payments for dependents of county employees and officers that die in the line of duty, and with the clarification made by our legal counsel this evening, that this did also apply to those who sustained injury from which they succumb at a later time during the course of...
Second.
Thank you.
Please vote. That carries with a vote of five to zero. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Ron. Item New Business Number Two.
Capital Outlay.
All right, if I may, I'll just briefly repeat what we mentioned at the work session.
Yes.
This is an annual item that we bring to the board after the publishing of the comprehensive annual financial report. By a previous resolution of the board, we calculate and recommend a transfer be made from the general fund, ultimately from its fund balance to the capital outlay fund. One thing I'd just like to clarify that was maybe not real clear at the work session was that, where are these funds going or what are they being used for? They're at this point simply being moved over to the capital outlay fund into a reserve for future capital outlay. They're not designated for any particular project until the board approves a capital project in that fund for which these funds would be used. They're simply put in a reserve at this time, and they're not going toward any particular project until the board so designates.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board or comments? Would anyone like to offer a motion?
Move we approve the transfer available funds authority from the general fund to the capital outlay fund is authorized in the resolution as briefed by staff.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And the motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Thank you, everyone, on that. Post, item number three under New Business was postponed to our August 20th work session, but we do have a new item on here, number four, partnership with UNG for the historic Matt School, and I believe this has some time sensitivity to it, so that's why we're adding it tonight.
It does. The semester's about to begin. So this is actually a collaboration agreement between Forsyth County, the Board of Commissioners, and the Board of Regents. First of all, let me get the easy stuff out of the way. There is no compensation or money required from the county with respect to this compensation. This is a collaboration agreement that will actually allow certain classes, and you can see in the fourth whereas down, it's, I'm not sure what that means, might be POLS 3106 and 6106 classes, so it's clearly to identify classes, to be able to provide basically some community assessments with respect to the use of the Matt Elementary Historical School. If you go to the very back of the agreement, that's Exhibit A, is the research plan. So the scope of work is the key. Students of the University of North Georgia enrolled in these two courses will conduct a professional, community-based needs assessment that will describe the makeup and history of the community, including but not limited to demographic, economic, socioeconomic, historical, political, civic, key leaders, past concerns, et cetera, describe what matters to people in the community, including but not limited to specific issues, the resources already in place to address those issues, availability, and barriers to resources, describe what matters to key stakeholders, including but not limited to key issues, context of the issue, and perceived level of priority, describe the evidence indicating what the problem goal should be, and identify appropriate evidence-based approaches that can be used to address prioritized goals. The intended work product of this is, the completed community needs assessment will analyze existing secondary data sources to understand the community, collect and analyze that empirical data, and provide basically Forsyth County with information on that such that we can better determine what may make reasonable sense with respect to that property. So the bottom line is, the scope of work is here. It's at no cost to the county. It will generate information that will be provided to the county. There is in fact a timeline of critical dates, and the completed report, board members, is that it will come to you on December 2nd, and they will begin conducting their community profile assessment by September 30th. So it's a short fuse, and it should produce some really meaningful data for us with respect to this property in the county.
We met, so I gave y'all a little information on it before at our last work session, and Tim Merritt and Commissioner Cooper and I met out at the Matt School with the assistant and the teaching assistant who lives on Doc Bremlett Road, or who grew up on Doc Bremlett Road, and looked at the facility. They were very encouraged by it. They named a ton of different things that they thought it could be used for. They were ready to get started on it. They were, they had the document in their hand then. It was the same document that they had sent before, but they had, lawyers got involved, and so they had to get it signed off on, and it was just a way they could collect a fee. Anyway, so they brought it forward. Not our lawyer, it wasn't our lawyer that did that, but it was their lawyer. And so, so now, we've got it, and we've got to get it back to them, but I think it's very exciting because it's a way that, and they're going to try to use, it's graduate students, but they're hoping it'll be some students that also will be from this area. And she was so excited about it, I don't know what it was called. I see some grant, some group that she was already talking, that they might come win an award for doing it. Oh, yeah, she did. Tim, do you have anything to add?
One comment, one question. I noticed in the document, at one point, they referenced this as the historic Matt Elementary Building, but in other places, they have dropped historic. I'd just like to be clear that this is only identified as the historic Matt Schoolhouse or Matt Elementary Schoolhouse, the historic, I think he's very important for us, so we don't have any confusion with any other elementary school.
And it wasn't an elementary. It went up, it went way past elementary. I mean, it went up to eighth grade, I think.
Okay. And the other thing is, I just had a question, if this document would restrict our use, photocopy, and reproducing of any reports that might come to us?
That's, no, I don't think so. It is a collaborative work, and there is, I'll go back to that very quick, because I do want to tell the board one more thing about it with respect to the county's obligation. It does provide that each entity, I think this is a fairly standard governmental produced State of Georgia contract, it talks about trademarks, which it's dubious whether the county has any trademarks, but to the extent that they want to tout that they have our logo on some of their produced documentation, I don't think that's going to cause anyone any concern. But again, Mr. Mayor...
Page, top of page three.
Yeah.
D, intellectual property.
Yeah, they'll own it, they will own it, but I believe we will have access to it, in fact, candidly, given that it's going to be the product of a joint collaboration, it'll be a public record.
And she said they'd come here and share and present to the board if we wanted them to. I think it's a great little partnership, and it's not costing us anything.
It's not. Madam Chair, and Commissioner Mills, very quickly, the last page, seven of seven, is if there is any obligation on us, it's the five bullet points, to provide applicable community-level data upon request within five days. So obviously, these students are going to need some of our data. An Open Records Act might get it faster, but five days will be just fine. Identify key stakeholders, positively promote study participation from community organizations, basically work with us. That's what our obligations are, is to work with us.
And I've already told her I'll do all that. And Molly said she would help too.
Thank you.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion that we approve the collaboration agreement from, that as presented by staff.
Thank you.
The motion is second, please vote. Motion carries with a vote of five to zero. Takes us to end of our regular business. I do understand that Mr. Mayor has at least one item. I don't know if Counselor does or not.
Madam Chair, I don't have an item for executive session this evening.
But Tim told you he did, so there is apparently a need for executive session, if you'd like to confirm that. And I'll make a motion, or is there a motion, to recess the regular meeting and go into recess for the purposes of litigation, land acquisition, and/or personnel.
Second.
The motion is second, please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, we are in recess for seven, at 7:45. For those of you who are still here, we do not anticipate taking any further action afterwards, and this should be fairly brief, so. We're back in session at 8:02 PM. Is there a motion to adjourn the regular meeting?
So moved, second.
The motion is second, please vote. And we are back out at 8:03. We are adjourned for the evening. Thank you.
We ordered adjourned.
Yee-haw.